Blue forms in the back of the room. And if you're wishing to testify tonight, we ask you to complete one of the blue forms and turn it into one of -- Kirsten's raising her hand, but any member of staff so that we can have your cards ready to call on you for the hearing or under citizen comments. Yes, because I can't mispronounce your name if you don't provide. There we go. All right. We're going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for January 23, 2018. Roll call.
Chair Simpson?
Here.
Vice Chair Flores?
Here.
Commissioner Rep?
Here.
Commissioner Reddick?
Here.
Commissioner Kai?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
And Commissioner Matzinger is excused.
Thank you very much. We have this evening on the consent agenda, the January 9, 2018 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Is there -- has everybody had a chance to read them? Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda, which consists of the Planning Commission meeting minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passed. Counsel liaison announcement, Counselor Garland.
I think we've got a busy night and a lot of people here to talk, so I'll keep it brief. You guys, we've got one hour left of vote. If you haven't voted yet, so drop off your ballots over there. And then I would just say February 6th, we have a very busy night at the City Council. So if you're looking to see what the City Council does, that would be a great night to show up. Not going to list all the things that we've got on there. The agenda should be posted in a bit to the website, but we have a lot of stuff going on. Police sidewalk program, we'll have an intake facility, water stuff, perhaps some Planning Commission stuff, high school, so all kinds of stuff. So February 6th.
All right. Again, before we move on to staff announcements, I want the audience to know that if you wish to testify tonight, either on the hearing or under community comments, we ask you to fill out one of the blue forms in the back of the room and turn it into a member of staff. There is also a sign up sheet in the back of the room that will put you on a mailing email list for all items that are going to be happening in the Planning Department. All right. Staff announcements, Erica.
So last Wednesday, we had our first comprehensive plan kickoff meeting. We had an excellent turnout and we received great input. Our next meeting will be held in April as we kind of work more on the technical side of documents such as the economic opportunity analysis that we just received a grant for and our housing policies. I want to remind Planning Commission that your next meeting will be on February 13th. And on the agenda for that meeting will be the housing use analysis, the technical piece of that document. And so you'll be -- we'll be looking for a recommendation on that. And that will proceed then to City Council as they are the ultimate decision maker for that piece. And then we also have some transportation system amendments proposed as well. And once again, we're looking for a recommendation for approval for City Council. And also on that agenda, we'll have an appeal of a director's interpretation as well.
Sounds like we have a busy meeting coming up also. I don't know if I want to trade packets with Sean or not, though. All right. This evening, we're looking for community comments. And community comments are limited to those items that are not already on the agenda. And I do not see anybody racing up to talk about item not already on the agenda. So we'll move on to new business. New business is our public hearing. The public hearing on PU 17-01 SUV 17-01 Denali Lane Plan Unit Development and Subdivision is called to order. The public hearing this evening will be conducted as follows. Staff will present the report, 15 minutes, questions if any by the hearing body for staff. We will then open the public hearing for testimony and the time will be limited as follows. The applicant will have 30 minutes, which will be split between presentation and rebuttal. Persons in favor of the application will have four minutes each. Persons opposed to the application will have four minutes each. The rebuttal from the applicant, which is the remainder of their 30 minutes. We will then close the public hearing and no other comments will be heard from the public or the applicant. There'll be final comments by staff and questions of staff if any by the commission, then discussion by the commission. A decision may be made by the Planning Commission at the close of the hearing or the matter may be continued to a time and date certain. If the matter is continued to a date certain, this is the only notice of that date you will receive. If you wish to speak, please fill out one of the blue testimony forms and submit it to the Planning Commission Secretary. The chair will recognize people who wish to speak and any questions should be addressed through the chair. When you come forward to speak, please state your name and address for the record and ensure that the microphone's green light is on. In reaching a decision on the application, the commission must consider whether the application meets the relevant approval criteria in the city's land use regulations. Those criteria are identified in the staff report. There are two copies of the staff report available in the room this evening. The testimony and evidence must address these criteria or other criteria you believe to apply to the decision. Please note, failure to raise an issue with enough detail to enable the commission, the applicant, and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the City Council or Land Use Board of Appeals on that issue. Also, failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues regarding proposed conditions of approval, again with enough detail to allow the commission to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. This is a type five land use decision and as such, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the City Council and the City Council makes the final decision. At this time, I would like to ask members of the commission to disclose any ex parte contacts, bias, or conflicts of interest, indicate the nature and extent of the ex parte contact bias or conflict of interest, and indicate whether you intend to participate in or abstain from the hearing. Just for a matter of public record, I've been here forever and I believe that I -- I know I participated at some level in the previous Sherwood, Southeast Sherwood master plan. And I don't know if I was on the commission, but I at least listened to the City Council hearings on the previous PUD application, but every part of that involvement was a matter of public record. So it doesn't impair my ability to make an informed decision this evening. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any Planning Commission members' ability to participate this evening? All right. Planning staff will now present the staff report.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Joy Chang, Associate Planner with the Planning Department. And before you tonight is Denali Lane Plan Unit Development 1701 and subdivision 1701. So the site is located in Southeast Sherwood, as shown on this slide. The site is approximately 3.71 acres in size and rectangular in shape with the exception of a narrow strip that extends to Southwest Murdoch Road at the southwest corner of the site, which is approximately 710 feet long and 25 feet wide. There also is a narrow strip of land on the southeast corner of the site, approximately 210 feet long and 40 feet wide, that is proposed to include a public utility easement. The applicant proposes to subdivide the parcel, the 3.71 parcel into seven lots with various open spaces. The site is located just east of Southwest Murdoch Road and north of Southwest Denali Lane with a zoning designation of very low density residential planned unit development. The lots range in size from 10,000 square feet to 19,442 square feet. The applicant proposes a planned unit development in this zone in order to utilize the special density allowance of 10,000 square foot minimum lot size. The applicant proposes areas of open space in order to comply with the planned unit development requirements. The proposal also includes the construction of a local street through the center of the site to connect Southwest Ironwood Lane to the north and Southwest Denali Lane to the south. The street connection is consistent with the transportation system planned local street connectivity map. In 2012, the site was previously approved for a six lot planned unit development subdivision through ordinance 2012-004. The approval changed the zoning to include the planned unit development designation. However, the applicant was unable to develop the site prior to the expiration of the preliminary approval. The site is part of Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, which was a proven concept by the Planning Commission through a resolution in 2006. Although the not formally adopted and incorporated into the comprehensive plan nor adopted by City Council, Southeast Master Plan does provide guidance for development and the intention of the community and surrounding property owners for the area. A piece of the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan was incorporated in the Sherwood Zoning Community Development Code through ordinance 2013-003, specifically section 16.12.010.83 that added Southeast Sherwood Master Planned Unit Development standards to the code. This parcel was part of the Ken Foster Farm site that has been identified by Department DEQ having contaminated soil. I was informed today that the applicant is now the current property owner and the property owner is responsible for completing the cleanup of all non-contamination on the site. The property owner is actively working with DEQ at the time of the application's submittal to finalize the cleanup of the contamination. All approvals of the DEQ shall be received prior to the applicant proceeding with any development on the subject property. A revised remedial action work plan dated December 15, 2017 was reviewed and approved by Mark Pugh of DEQ. And a grading permit for the contamination cleanup has been submitted to the city and is currently under review. So as previously stated, this slide basically identifies the site as being zoned very low density residential planned unit development. The approval criteria are all identified on this slide and I won't read them all. So the all review criteria have either been satisfied, met, or can be conditioned in the staff report to satisfy the standard. The planned unit development process is a two-step process. The first step, which we're at today, is the preliminary development plan approval where Planning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council and ultimately City Council renders the decision. Once the preliminary development plan approval is received, then the second step can happen. The applicant would submit a detailed final development plan for review and approval of the Planning Commission. Planned unit development integrate buildings, land use, transportation facilities, utility systems, and open space through an overall site design on a single parcel of land or multiple properties under one or more ownership. It allows for creativity and flexibility in site design and review, which cannot be achieved through a strict adherence to existing zoning and subdivision standards. This image on this slide is the recommended Southeast Master Plan, is the alternative B and C. The proposal is consistent with the recommended plan through the connection of Southwest Denali Lane to the north, to go north, and ultimately connecting to Southwest Murdoch Road through Southwest Ironwood Lane. As I mentioned before, a piece of the Southeast Sherwood Plan was added to the Community Development Code. The first standard is maximum density of four dwelling units per net buildable acre. The net buildable area for this site is 2.6 acres after subtracting the right-of-way and environmentally constrained areas. Based on this net buildable area, the site can be developed with 10 lots and the applicant is proposing seven, meeting the standard. Development patterns of alternative B and C plans will be further discussed in the following slides. Minimum lot area. So the proposed lots are sized between 10,000 square feet to 19,442 square feet. All lots either meet or exceed the 10,000 square foot minimum. In regards to pedestrian connections, the proposed development will link with the adjacent residential site through the installation of sidewalk along both sides of the extended Southwest Denali Lane. Additionally, a pedestrian path will be installed within the western strip adjacent to Southwest Ironwood Lane, which is identified as track A. With the construction of these features, pedestrian connectivity will be provided from Southwest Murdoch along Southwest Ironwood Lane and through Southwest Denali Lane. In addition, there will be a pedestrian path provided along the west half of the south edge of track D as in dog and a five-foot wide access easement along the rear lots of lots five, six, and seven to provide access between tracks D and E.
Can you say that again, please?
In addition, there will be a pedestrian path along the west half of the south edge of track D and a five-foot wide access easement along the rear lots of five, six, and seven to provide access between tracks D as in dog and E to the south.
Thank you.
Related to open space, a pathway in usable open space will be provided within the western strip of the subject's site, like I indicated, track A, adjacent to Southwest Ironwood Lane. And unfortunately, this depiction doesn't identify in because it's the strip. Track A will contain a paved pathway, landscaping, and a park benches for the benefit of the local community. The eastern edge of the proposed development will be dedicated as track C, open space to meet the requirements of the alternative B, C park area. Additionally, usable open space area will be provided in track D, containing landscaping, picnic tables, benches, and a paved pathway. And again, a five-foot wide access easement has been provided along the rear of lots five, six, and seven to provide pedestrian access between tracks D and E. Environmental constraints, the site is adjacent to identified wetlands. These wetlands and associated vegetated corridor have been further defined and delineated by an environmental consultant and the report was included as part of the applicant's submittal. The vegetative corridor and wetlands along the eastern boundary of development will remain undisturbed in track C to be dedicated as open space. The very small portion of the vegetative corridor is in the 25-foot wide western strip of the site that will be disturbed to construct the pedestrian pathway along track A. And this will be mitigated in the area in track C. The Southeast Sherwood Master Plan does have a view corridor standard where it states that the height and specific location of buildings along the Denali Lane extension will be important. The further east and the lower in height these homes are constructed, the less they would block eastward views from the adjacent home to the west. The applicant submitted a view corridor section as part of the plan set illustrating the top of the proposed houses on lots one, two, and three will not impede the views of the existing home on the adjacent western property. Staff determined that due to the topographical constraints of the site, required views corridors are met as practicable. Housing design compatibility, the proposed housing design types as discussed in the architectural pattern books that was submitted are prairie, modern, and craftsman style, similar and compatible with existing houses in the adjacent subdivision and existing surrounding development. An architectural pattern book has been submitted to further assist on housing design capability. So the planned unit development allows for the flexibility of standards. The applicant is requesting the front and street yard setbacks be decreased from 20 feet to 15 feet for lots four and seven, as well as rear yard setback for lot one from 20 feet to five feet. The rear yard setback for lot one from 20 feet to five feet seems reasonable since the budding parcels closest to the proposed structure is over 150 feet away. Again, due to the constraint of the site and the large lot sizes of the lots and abutting parcels, approval of the setback requests are necessary. Due to the, again, to the topography of the site, a shared driveway is proposed for lots one, two, and three through an access easement along two. The preliminary plot shows the driveway to be 20 feet wide with a fire department turnaround easement that is 30 feet wide benefiting all of those three parcels, lots one, two, and three. So required public notice and publications were completed and at the start of this meeting, we didn't receive any community letters or emails. All other approval criteria not highlighted in this oral staff report are addressed within the written staff report. The criteria have either been met or can be satisfied as condition. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval with conditions of Denali Lane to City Council. So that concludes my staff report and I can answer any questions you may have.
Does anybody have any specific questions for staff before we call for the applicant?
Actually, I had one question on the submitted geotech report that came with the application. It's six years old and the registrant that stamped it has since expired. It seems like something from a current engineer that's newer should have been submitted, but it's on page 117, but I don't see anything in city standards that say it has to be of a certain timeline. Looks like it's from the prior application.
So it's August 26, 2011? Is that the one that you're thinking of?
Yeah. The report is dated, yes, the report itself is dated August 26, 2011. However, I don't believe that any of the site conditions, soil conditions on the site have changed. There's been no development in the area and nothing that would lend me to say that there would have been any significant change to the soil or topography that would require a different geotech report to confirm the original geotech's findings. It would have been good for them to have provided that, but I think all you would get is another geotech stamping something that said, yeah, it's still valid. So I don't feel, I don't feel opposed to accepting this one as I know the conditions have not changed on the site.
So I guess asking the question, the site hasn't changed, but has standards within the industry and the...
The soil analysis portion of it and how soils are determined and what's on the site has not changed.
Okay, because...
There's pretty sad.
Earthquake standards have changed and other things, but so I don't...
Seismicity and stuff like that, when they come in for their building permits, they're going to have to provide a current structural soil analysis that goes along with the plans that's updated. For the purposes of determining what's going on with the soils as far as erosion, sediment control, or storm drainage, things like that, this is good enough. Wanted to also ask, and I'm not sure if I saw it, if you could just help me on... So that 20-foot access easement going through lots one, two, and three to benefit 1 through three has also that fire department turnaround. Is there a maintenance agreement going with that? I don't know if that was conditioned or if it was in there. It was?
Yes, it would be required, especially since it's also a subdivision, it is, there will be a CCNR tied to it.
But it'll be a document that keeps 1 through 3 responsible for that.
Right. And also, the plot itself would identify the shared access easement and the CCNRs would definitely identify as far as the maintenance requirements tied to it.
And Planning Commission and public, I just want to remind you, Joy mentioned it, but I want to highlight that this is, because this is a planned unit development, this is not your last bite at the apple. So they will come back to the Planning Commission in what is really a more traditional subdivision look where, you know, we'll make sure that we condition CCNRs and all of those things. So this is, think of it as sort of that high level in concept review and then there'll be another review that will come back to the Planning Commission to confirm that they're complying with that high level plan review and then probably providing more detail as well.
Yeah, I get that. That's extended questions I have.
Yes, go ahead.
I had some questions regarding that change in that setback from 20 to five. And it's more just clarification, would you be able to go back to the slide that has the plan on here? So any of those, like that'll be fine. So when it's requesting, when the applicant's requesting that the rear setback be reduced from 20 to five, that's requesting the setback on the west side, correct?
That is correct because the frontage for lot one is on Denali and so the furthest point would be the rear.
Okay. I just wasn't sure with the additional access that was being put in what was technically considered the front of the property.
Yeah, since the right-of-way dictates as far as frontage.
Gotcha.
So since it's an access way that they're just having as far as the driveway easement, that portion isn't considered as the frontage.
Okay. And then I also had just a few questions on regarding the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan. In reviewing some of the prior documents, I saw that there was plans before this, plans A, B, and C. Since alternative BC was never formally adopted by city council, are plans A, B, and C still possible to be under consideration or to be incorporated?
So, I think I'll answer that, and my understanding, my recollection is that BC was identified as the preferred plan, and when the code was amended to allow, in the VLDR zone densities at the four units per acre, it was predicated on adhering to the southeast Sherwood master plan, alternative BC. So, that's what's in the code. So, I guess the answer is no, not amended to the code.
Gotcha, okay. So, even though it was never formally adopted by council, this is de facto what?
Right. Yeah, basically, when council approved the language in the VLDR zone, that sort of memorialized the southeast Sherwood master plan and alternative BC and allowed that as an option. Essentially, that's the option that they provided.
Okay, okay. Then, that answer answers any other questions that I would have after, so, thank you.
Any other questions before we call the applicant up?
Can I, sorry, can I follow up a little bit on the five-foot easement? That's 20 feet to five feet is a pretty significant, to me, variance request. So, were other alternatives looked at that maybe could make that a little bit less dramatic?
And that might be an applicant...
And that may be an applicant question, but it's curious.
Right, because if you, I certainly wasn't, you know, sandbagging for the applicant to come up, but I had expressed my concerns to Joy on that matter already, and their previous submittal, if you look at it, actually had the houses in a different location, so, unless staff has...
We continue.
Unless staff has a specific answer for that, I...
We would defer to the applicant.
All right. This begins. I have four people for applicant, and I, in no order, am starting with Anne Marie Skinner. And if you're intended to come up in a different order, there is also Eric Evans, Lynn Green, and Tim Roth. If you, whoever's testifying, just as an applicant, you have 30 minutes, and just state your name and address for the record, and if the green light's on, we will be able to hear you.
Okay. It's going to be a joint 30-minute testimony period.
Okay.
My name is Anne Marie Skinner, business address 6445 Southwest Fallbrook, number 100, Beaverton, 97008. Would just like to start out by thanking staff. This has been a challenging project. It was started, actually, the pre-application conference was started with a senior planner who's no longer at the city of Sherwood, and then the original application was submitted with the contract planner, and then he left, and now we have Joy, and who's been a delight to work with. But, so, we've had a lot of staff changes and a lot of staff meetings, and that, in addition to the fact that the piece of property is very challenging, has made us most appreciative of staff's review, diligent review of the application that was submitted, that we feel addresses all of the code requirements, and so, we certainly agree with staff's recommendation of approval. We agree with all of the conditions except for a few that we have discussed with staff prior to the hearing, and Mr. Galati has indicated to Eric Evans to rework some of those conditions, and so, Eric will testify to some of those conditions. The one that I specifically want to address is condition number 14 under section B, which is prior to final development plan approval, a final tree preservation plan consistent with the requirements of section 16.142.070.0G will be submitted. Our concern with that condition is that there aren't any trees on the site that will be, there aren't any trees that will be preserved, so, there isn't any need for a final tree preservation plan. In discussing that with Joy, she was under the impression that the street trees along southwest Ironwood Lane were part of our property. They are not. Our property line does not include those existing street trees along southwest Ironwood Lane. So, I guess we would ask for something like, prior to final development plan approval, a final tree plan consistent with street tree and tree canopy requirements for the site will be submitted.
So, track C is, I don't have an aerial to know, it's not being changed.
It's not being touched.
Are there trees in that area?
Yes, but nothing's being touched, so, and there's no construction around it, meaning that there is no need to assess any of the trees because none of them are coming out. There's no grading around it. I just, we're just, we don't have any, if the site were covered with trees that needed to be preserved, we completely understand, but there's nothing, a tree preservation plan is not going to accomplish anything, I guess. So, we're looking for some direction on that condition.
So, understanding that there was the trees themselves, I just re-verified the design or the site plan, and the trees are not on their site. It's abutting it. Staff would be satisfied in regards to deleting that condition completely.
So, there is a condition that covers the tree canopy in a difference, there's a different tree canopy?
Yes, there is.
Because I'm looking, I'm looking at an aerial that does have...
That is correct.
Trees, but that is an old picture where the trees have been taken off the parcel completely.
Right, so, the tree preservation requirements is going to be regulated by Clean Water Services, and they, through their service provider letter, are very clear in regards to what trees needed preserving, and like I indicated before, the mitigation in regards to the vegetative corridor along that track A, along Ironwood, is going to be mitigated in track C, but again, that is regulated by Clean Water Services.
So, the original intent of your putting that in there was because the street trees on Ironwood were potentially part of the application?
Correct, and I was mistaken.
And the street trees are not going to be removed?
They are not removed because it's not on their site.
Okay, so, all right, that makes perfect sense. We'll let her finish.
That was the only, the other three conditions were under engineering, and so, I'll let Mr. Evans address those. And I know that commission has a lot of questions, so, I don't want to duplicate information that's already been presented and it's in your packet, so, we will open it up for questions, and we are, yes?
Tim Roth, applicant owner, JT Roth Construction A, 12600 Southwest 72nd Avenue, Suite 200, Portland, Oregon, 97223. This is not my normal voice. It goes with the flu bug that's going around, that hopefully is behind me. To address the question about the placement of the homes on lots one, two, and three, we originally looked at and designed a layout of lots and home sites on this where we had four home sites or lots on the west side of Denali. So, originally, I think we had submitted a plan showing eight total lots as opposed to seven. In review of that, determination was that these, all the lots on the west side of Denali have an extremely steep upgrade slope to them. In addition, this site is, has been identified as being part of that Tonquin scab lands properties that have a very high basalt rock base to them, so, our concerns were in trying to dig into a steep hillside, number one, not providing our homeowner with any kind of a rear access for rear yard, and number two, either having to drill and blast and dynamite the hillside to get our foundations into those lots. We opted to sacrifice one of the lots, and we found, we had determined that we felt that there was a better placement of the lots to place the homes on top of the, the conditions are on top of the rock and eliminate the chipping and the blasting that would have to occur if they were, and also be able to provide the home sites with some kind of a access to a rear yard. Even though the code requires or identifies the front yard of lot one to be on the Denali street side, the placement of the house, typical placement of the house is that we have a 20-foot setback on lot one to the garage. Our, the functional backyard of lot number one is actually from the house to Denali, and the five-yard, the side five-yard setback is, we view as being a side yard setback as opposed to a rear yard setback, which is an acceptable setback on a side yard for a house. And to the extent that the neighboring property to the west, the existing home is something a little over 150 feet away from, so, we didn't feel like we were really impacting necessarily that existing property or the property owner or that house. So, we viewed that, even though the code doesn't allow that, we viewed that placement of that house with that five-foot setback as being a side yard as opposed to the rear Did you have any other questions regarding that, Justin?
No, that definitely answered, you know, some of my initial questions as to why it's facing this direction versus, you know, coming off of Denali. I would say a follow-up question might be, and this might be better suited for city staff to be able to answer, directly adjacent to the west of lot one that contains that property that's roughly 150 feet away, is there, as this area develops, is there likelihood that that might get subdivided into smaller lots where another house might get put into an odd placement with how far this house is setback, or is that unlikely?
So, in regards to redeveloping a parcel, it's always up to the property owners in regards to wanting to do that or not. Unfortunately, the property owner is here tonight, but at the same time, when they do redevelop and let's say decide to subdivide, they would be required to go through the same standard as the applicant is going through tonight, especially since the zoning, I believe, for this entire area is plan unit development also, and it's also within, well, let's get the zoning map up.
I think the entire area is VLDR. I don't believe anything other than the site is...
Right, so, it's not a plan unit development, but it is very low-density residential, so, they would have to meet the development standards of that zone.
So, to follow up on that, the, as we heard earlier, the rear setback requirement in the very low residential range is 20 feet. This request is for five. What, you mentioned you considered this a side setback, what's the side setback in that zoning type?
Whether the applicant...
And whether, and whether they consider it, decide or not, isn't necessarily true.
City staff determines the backyard, and we're doing a 75% reduction when we normally do a 10% reduction, I mean...
So, for a single-family detached on the side setback is five feet?
Just to follow up on that point, because that is concerning to me, especially if that adjacent property were to be subdivided at some point in the future as well, that can have impacts on that property. Is there, what other options have you guys looked at that might be able to make that setback, you know, 15 feet instead of five, or something that's a little bit or substantially closer to the 20-foot requirement? I'm not, you know, I haven't walked the property, I hear what you're saying about the rock, but there's a lot of space there in that lot, and it seems like we got to be able to find 10 feet from a layman's point of view as far as pushing the house.
Yeah. And we don't have to reposition their house, we just have to, we can, we can make a, we can make a finding that says that a five-foot setback is unreasonable and find in the language that we disagree with the staff and that it is not necessary. I mean, we just have to, we are going down a path in a PUD that says we are doing a 75% reduction instead of our standard 10 or 15% reduction, and we can disagree with staff and ask them to reconsider the staff report.
Yeah, and I guess I would, that's why I'm asking the applicant if, to give me some more insight here on that and why I wouldn't want to push for that, or why that's not reasonable.
Well, that particular lot, lot one, has the steepest grade, it's probably two-to-one slope from the end of that private drive to all the way down to Denali. So, we're dealing with a grade issue there, and honestly, those three lots, the houses across the top, are considered designed for those, are going to be a main floor living or a single floor off of the main grade to minimize the, any height or any restriction of the heights, potentially putting a basement underneath. So, that particular lot, the way we configured the lot, it kind of, as it pie shapes up towards, from Denali all the way up to the private drive, it kind of starts to get narrow up there, and it starts to throttle that down in the width of that footprint, and that would force, potentially force us to have to go back further out into that steep grade. It can be done. We also looked at that as, you know, there are several examples of side yards backing up to rear yards. We would think that the property that's adjacent to this, that the, we would assume, make the assumption, but then again, whoever develops that would make that clarification, but that the homes that would be abutting that common west property line would probably be abutting by a backyard or a rear yard of the house, and those rear yard setbacks at that point would be a 20-foot, so, there'd be a full separation of 25 feet, but that's obviously making the assumption that that's the way the property would develop. So, again, we looked at this as, viewed, even though the code defines it differently with the placement, with the allowance of the private drive and the allowance of the placement of the homes on the top of those, on the top of that hillside, we viewed that and looked at that as a side yard as opposed to, and we were in, within the five-foot side yard compliance. So, and I understand that you guys are looking at it as though it's a rear yard by definition, but the true function of that is a side yard, and we're within a five-foot setback that's allowed, so...
Can I ask how we determine what is the rear yard? I mean, when you have a housing shape that's like this and you've got two different rears...
That is an excellent question. I actually just looked it up to see what our definition was, and I want to refer planning commission to page 280 of our development code, because we have it in front of you. And the definition for rear lot line on irregular and triangle lots, so, provided for irregular and triangle lots, the rear lot line shall be deemed a line 10 feet in length within the lot, parallel to, and at a maximum distance from the front lot line.
Okay.
So, much more clear.
That clear enough?
That is great.
So, that would seem to cut the corner of the southwest corner then. You draw a parallel line to Denali on the southeast corner that's 10 feet long, then it would be basically where the driveway is, if I'm understanding that correctly. It would be essentially, if you're saying it's parallel to here and it's at least 10 feet in length, then it would be like this or something, if I'm understanding what you read correctly.
Yep.
Doesn't really add a lot of clarity.
Well, it could, I mean, it could be...
Well, it could, I mean, it could be considered then a side yard instead of a rear yard.
Oh, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I just wanted to clarify what you were saying in regards to the difficulties of lot one. So basically where you have the footprint of the house currently is, is probably the most ideal location from, from a building standpoint in terms of, of current grade and, and whatnot. So if it were to have to be pushed back, it would just be further down that slope, just making it much, that much more difficult to create that, that house on that lot, correct?
Well, it's, it's never been my desire to create a driveway access to a house that's inverted or sloping towards the garage. I always try to elevate the garage to a point where I have positive slope or grade away from the garage and into the, to the street, in this case, the private driveway. So the further you go down, the further I elevate and the more clearance that I have underneath that. I also am going to, you know, want to stress that, that I maintain my 20-foot setback from the end of the private drive to the garage door, because that's generally a parking pad. Have a wide enough parking pad that we can get two cars on that. So again, the further you push that down the hill, the higher you start elevating and the more challenges you're going to have with your driveway and keeping your driveway elevated and positive drainage.
So a couple of questions as part of the P U D process. Are we going to be approving the specific site placement of this house through this approval or when it comes back for final site plan? Because if we are just approving seven lots and, and a setback and the house placement is in the final design review that has to come back before the planning commission, we will see this again and, which leads into my next question, because there's a design element to this that I asked Joy about prior to that, because there is within their application submittal, an architectural review committee requirement, which the city of Sherwood doesn't have except as designated as the planning commission. So, and, so looking at what we're doing here, we're, we're making a recommendation to council for seven lots. They have illustrated where they believe those seven houses are going to be based on their current belief system of what they want to do. But between now and our hearing, can that change as long as they meet whatever we approve for setbacks?
That is, that is, that is correct. So this is kind of the broad overall vision. And when they come back to planning commission for their final site review, then at that time, you'll be looking at, you know, the house footprints.
So technically, the footprints that we see here are for illustrative purposes only and they could change. So we need to make sure that we keep our eye on what the, what, what, what it is we're approving tonight. What we're approving tonight is whether or not the setbacks meet what we believe the code is implying to us. And as part of this process, we are approving a design, an architectural design book.
That is correct.
And the architectural design book is a document incorporated in the application. And if we approve it, they'll come back with one of those housing design types in here if it's approved. And are we then acting as the architectural review committee at the site plan?
I, I'm going to chime in real quick and just, it's always weird when you have a plan unit development that's really just one lot, you know, it's, or just a small, yeah, a smaller thing. So what you're really doing the plan unit development for is a little bit of flexibility, allowing the private drive to access three lots, because currently our code says that you can only have two lots access off of a private drive. And the density that they're proposing because they're being consistent with the southeast Sherwood master plan. That's really what you're looking at. If you wanted to, I mean, Joy and Eric are absolutely right that you're not necessarily approving the, the building locations at this time. Certainly you would say, we're only recommending approval of this because of these building locations, but I don't think you're hearing that from staff. That's not the recommendation specifically. So really what you'd be doing is forwarding a recommendation for this conceptual plan unit development based on them complying with the southeast Sherwood master plan with the flexibility that's been asked for if that's what you want to recommend approval for.
Right, and the southeast Sherwood master plan has a set of requirements above and beyond what the V L D R has, which is buffering, screening, view corridors, and housing design types that match the existing community. And so we need to look at that to say, is this what we're being presented? The footprint may change, but if we don't address the specific view corridor buffering, screening setbacks, that's where the house situation could come back to be something that we, an unintended consequence of not understanding what, what this process entails. And part of the P U D process is a benefit for the community. And that's the benefit for the community I was trying to hook into to say we're getting the sidewalks. And I was questioning that five-foot easement. Is that a public path easement from track D to track E? Because I was, I was really curious why track or lot five goes out in a little stub. Then when you said there's a five-foot easement, are you intending that to be part of a public park system so that public could access all the way across from track E to track D and create some sort of public amenity back there?
Track E needs to be maintained.
Track E is.
Track E needs to be maintained, so we needed to have some kind of an easement, access easement that would get us from an existing track D to get us, to allow us access to track D so we can perform the maintenance that's needed. It wasn't intended to be an access for public. It was more of a maintenance of track D.
Okay.
We can't land lock track D. We have to have, be able to have some kind of an access to it.
Okay, I was just trying to get clarification as to, to what its intent was and what our public benefit is on the P U D.
I, I did want to make one real quick comment. If, if there is, if, if the, if there's a condition that right now, which there is, that speaks to the setback being reduced from 20 to five. And if staff determines that the, the proper interpretation of that rear yard is something other than that west property line, I think that probably needs to be rewritten. That condition needs to be rewritten before it's just completely thrown out. And if that rear yard is a line that's parallel with Denali, then, you know, again, what we're showing the five yard could be interpreted as a, as a side yard setback.
Saying, so we'll need to get staff for clarification with that. And then you, I think it was mentioned you had other conditions that you had discussed with Mr. Bellotti.
Yeah, there, there's a couple engineering conditions. Before I have Eric Evans come up here, I just want to go back to your statement about public benefit. Development of this site provides a huge public benefit in one huge aspect. And if I lived there, I would love to see this site developed because of the soil contamination. I would not want to be living next to a site that has the contaminated soils that this site has. And as long as it is not developed, those contaminated soils will stay there. So for the public benefit of the development of this site, cleanup of the site, I think outweighs almost everything to get rid of hazardous soils on a site next to a place where people already reside. The other public benefit is we're connecting Denali lane, which is in the city's plan. And if this site isn't developed, there will be no connection of Denali lane.
I actually had a question, maybe you want it. So earlier you mentioned, we were talking about the tree preservation, that there, there are trees down in track C, but they aren't mapped on the plan. I see some edge of blackberries, but that kind of leads me over to where lot one's going to go. And that home is, we've got this bubbled out blackberry area and it does seem by an old aerial that there may be trees there. So I just wanted to confirm there are no trees in there? I mean, in that whole blackberry area. Because you're clearly, you are showing trees out there. That leads me to think all the trees.
In fact, C, you mean? I'm sorry, the black.
Oh, I'm looking at the existing conditions. There's a bubbled out blackberries and.
On lot three?
Well, mostly lot one.
Okay, I need to see what he's, oh.
Sheet two.
There are no trees on lot one. It's all blackberries right now.
Okay.
Which are to be cleared off, of course.
I didn't see the trees in track Cs, and then that made me think maybe the survey ended at the berries.
There are trees in track C, but I could be wrong. I don't remember ever seeing those.
Yeah, I think.
Do you have any other questions?
Oh, I'm sure we do, but we'll, we'll let people come up and testify and get that part moving.
Hello, Eric Evans, Amoryo Design, six four four five Southwest Fallbrook, Suite 100, Beaverton, Oregon, nine seven zero zero eight. And I am a civil engineer and I wanted to go through some of the conditions that we'd like to ask for some minor adjustments to, I guess. Changes in wording, adjustments mean things at planning hearings, so. And Bob, I didn't talk to you about this one at first, so I'm going to start with the condition D two. And this one has the requirement to have the N F A, no further action letter from the D E Q prior to acceptance of the engineering plans or approval of the engineering plans. And that really isn't our intent. The, we've applied for and been given a grading permit to start the cleanup. Essentially, we're gunning any day now. So the intent is that we would have the N F A probably prior to the, say, the finaling of the subdivision construction. So I'd like to rewrite condition D two to change the word approval to acceptance and then strike the word plans. So it'd be more or less the acceptance of the subdivision public improvements. And we can have a conversation.
Say that again. You wanted to say prior to Sherwood Engineering Department, acceptance of the public improvement plans?
Improvements, I guess plural, and the improvements.
That would be a whole different section. So we'll just take, we'll take it down and then we'll, we're not going to wordsmith or ask, ask for questions right on the fly. I think Bob probably will have one response for everything, maybe.
Well, no.
No.
Different responses for different questions. I would like to treat each question individually. That way we can think about it, focus on one.
Okay.
And then go on to the next one. As far as this wording goes, if he's, what he's asking for, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the no further action required letter that we would receive, we will, is basically given to us after construction is complete of the public improvements up to that point in time. But I'm not sure how that would work, because usually, in my experience, we get the no further action requirement before we allow the construction, which means you've done everything in compliance with earth moving and stuff like that as far as D E Q is concerned. And my primary concern is that public improvements never get in the, the way of that no further action letter being issued. So you'd have two different things going on at the same time. One for D E Q, the, whatever requirements are necessary for no further action. And the second requirement is constructing items that are relative, under the city's permit review and stuff, is the public improvements. You know, I, I'm having a little bit of a hard time saying, we'll do them both together. Wilbury will take, if anything goes wrong, the city will have authority to say yea or nay without the no further action. I, I, I have a problem with that and I'm not sure how that's going to work out.
Okay, so we can table that for now and move on to the next one.
Sorry, I just, I sort of, it's sort of a point of order, just, right now, we're hearing from the applicant and it seems like we're getting into dialogue. And I guess I would recommend that we hear the applicant out, maybe take public testimony, and then we can have this dialogue when they come back for their rebuttal. And that would give Bob time to.
I would appreciate that, yes, thank you. So, all right.
So I'm, since I'm presenting on that item, we would, potentially the N F A would, would come at some significant time away, so we'd essentially miss the summer construction season if that was the case. So we're trying to get the, to not link the approval of the construction drawings to the N F A. So that was our intent there.
Okay.
You know, we, we have a work plan that's been approved by D E Q and, and we have a licensed geologist who's going to be overseeing the clean, the work cleanup. So our, our concern is that we do and we complete the cleanup and then we get to the end. And, and we don't have a timeline that, that we know of that it's going to take D E Q to issue the no further action letter. So we could be done in March or in April. We could be sitting waiting for that no further action letter for D E Q. It could take them three months. We don't have that control. It could take them three months to issue that. And, and we don't want to lose the window of opportunity during the summer, the four months that we have dry weather to be able to go on and do the hillside work that we need to do. So that's, that was our concern.
Okay, so.
So I'll move on. Condition D three, there's just a minor typo. It asks for a 1200 CB permit, which I'm going to call that a 1200 CN, just, I think, just a clerical typo. So I'd like to change it since we're cleaning up a couple of things. Condition D five talks about the site distance at Ironwood and Murdoch. And that, it's an existing intersection that doesn't have adequate site distance. I looked at it this afternoon in the rain and it, it's, it's a little shy of the standard. So I'd like to add to the end of that condition, these words, more or less. Or coordinate with the city engineer to approve a design exception to the site distance standard. Condition D six, I'd like to change the percent slope on the roadway from 11.6 to 12%. And that shall not exceed 12%. Condition D 16 is the last one. It's, I don't think it's, it doesn't quite fit with what we're doing. It asks for tree wells around the, the trees in the right of way. But that's traditionally done when you have like a boulevard strip where you have no planters. And so there could be one or two spots where it might come into play on Ironwood. So I'd like to add these words to the end of the condition, more or less, these words, where adequate tree to sidewalk clearance is not available.
Say that again.
So I'm adding to the end of the condition, where adequate tree to sidewalk clearance is not available. It's mundane things, but that's all I have essentially.
So Bob, I wanted to point out something that was just brought to my attention in, in the D E Q work plan, the approved work plan. One of the conditions that D E Q has imposed on this site is that after we complete the cleanup and after we complete the improvements that we need, we're required to go in and we're required to import soil and place a layer of imported soils over the top of the complete site. And so until we complete that phase of it, they won't issue the no further action. So we're going to need to, maybe we can come up with something that's, that the cleanup has been deemed complete or, or been, you know, certified to be complete short of, short of that final layer. or been, you know, certified to be complete short of, short of that final layer of soils.
So I'm gonna take Julius' recommendation that we allow for public testimony. And then I'm also gonna ask staff to take under consideration the previous comments, which is this is our first blush at this and that a condition of approval for a PUD when it comes to the site specific, if a condition for DEQ NFA letter is here, would it be possible to change it during the site plan review based on additional information that's provided between this hearing and the site plan hearing? So we don't have to make final, I don't know the answer to that. We'll let staff mull on that while we take public testimony. Because again, we're doing a 10,000-foot PUD lot lines versus a site plan approval. So I want to make sure that we don't get stuck on a detail that can or will be adjusted when we get to the next hearing.
So Eric is done. So we have Lynn Green, who's the geologist for Creekside Environmental. He's here if the staff had any questions specific to the efforts of cleanup. He's available to direct those questions to, or you can hear from him later if you.
Oh, yeah. And we may have rebuttal questions or clarification when we do that. I don't know if anybody has geology questions right at this moment. Haven't you at the moment? Okay, so, thank you very much. And just for clarification, when we were asking questions, I did note that staff was doing a very good job of trying to stop the clock while we were asking questions and you were answering those. So they've tried to be cognizant of that your 30-minute presentation was, we preserved the 30 minutes even when we were asking you questions outside of your presentation. So, thank you. All right. I don't have any blue sheets yet to start mispronouncing more names. All right. Lisa and Roger Walker.
Do you think I might ask that you have a minute to look at that information I've given you and maybe take a quick break?
Oh.
Do that? There's a letter.
Oh, look at that.
Outlin some of that with that photograph.
I'm sorry, I did not know that, so.
Break so I didn't have to spend my four minutes talking to that letter.
Okay, so. All right, sorry, not that.
That is this right here.
Okay, so.
There's a.
I made a.
Center with an exhibit and then also a photograph that we were gonna pass down as opposed to getting seven copies.
We passed a, there's one color picture.
Right. There's just one set of that, but seven other documents.
I think that picture will probably mean something different after I read this.
Chair Simpson, if you wanted to take a break to both read that and then we could also get a copy for the record and the applicant. Staff could also talk about comments that were made earlier and maybe save a little bit of time. So we'd also take a break later, potentially.
All right, so it is 8:11. If it's acceptable with everybody, we'll take between a five and 10-minute recess. And then if anybody in the audience, I don't know if you, if staff has the ability to have a couple extra copies for the applicant and then a couple, if someone in the audience needs a copy of the letter, because.
I brought seven, right? I think I might have one more.
So. Oh, okay.
Are there any other things and any other submissions that we need to consider too?
Nope, I.
Okay.
Wait. Okay, that's it. That's why, I thought there were 40 people couldn't be testifying.
That's what it felt like. I was like, what?
There's a lot of people talking tonight. All right, so we will recess for 10 minutes to read the letter, allow staff to confer regarding the applicant's concerns about the conditions. I think we're all back in our chairs. We'll call this back to order. Commissioner Scott.
So just prior to the break, I had pulled up an aerial Google Maps on my phone to look at the site in question. And it does appear to me that there are some amount of trees in Track C and potentially across the proposed Lot One. So I was looking at that and I mentioned it to Commissioner Simpson as well. And so I'm disclosing that I did look at that. I don't know how current the aerial is, but it certainly appears to be trees to me. And I have some further questions about that we might want to follow up on later.
So, just so staff understands that we did have, Commissioner Scott looked at Google Maps and is disclosing that he saw trees on the Google map picture and he mentioned it to me. And we're making that statement for the public record that we had that discussion off the public record. So we'll circle back around to it, but we wanted to make sure, because I know you guys were doing something when we disclosed it just now, so that's okay. All right, so we are back to Lisa and Roger Walker. Thank you very much. And thank you for giving us the opportunity to read that before we take your testimony.
I appreciate that you took the time to read that. So I didn't use my time going over it specifically. Lisa and Roger Walker, 23500 Southwest Murdoch Road, Sherwood 97140. We are the adjacent property in this whole thing that we've been talking about with the one home 150 feet from the property line, that particular property there. And as noted in the letter and as you guys have spoken to a few, a little bit already, there are a few things that we wanted to bring to light. Appreciate very much the consideration you're giving to the side or back setback discussion regarding the 5 feet to 20 feet. Ask that that maybe is additional time taken to review how that needs to specifically be stated and conditioned in the approvals so that we do in fact are very clear with how we're handling that and that they not change something for flexibility purposes at a later date. That speaks to the site, the setbacks issue. The other thing was the view easement that had been brought up as well. There was something in the applicants, in the application and in the staff report that mentioned Sheet 11 that we were not able to actually locate where they were talking about some indication that they've given to us to be able to have that view easement. So we were looking to get more information about that specifically before we object. Because if they've already taken that into account, that might serve us to meet our needs just fine. Additionally, we wanted to ask about access to our lot from Track A. Perhaps getting something in the record for easement so that should later development be desired that we might not be landlocked in that corner by having that public easement there without something in the record. Last, or also on the tree issue that Commissioner Scott had brought up. As you can see on the photograph we attached to our letter, there is in fact trees on Lot Three and Lot One both.
Yeah, the colored picture.
Or actually on the aerial map. This was provided by the applicant, actually. And it kind of does show how our property could possibly be dissected at some point and divided at some point should we want to develop or future owners want to develop. So that we were speaking to wanting to be concerned about having that setback issue. But as well, it does show lots of trees on Lot One. We know that Lot Three has lots of trees as well. Or a very nice set of trees and I'm hoping that we can discuss something to be kept on those. There is at least 10 deer that live there and they're in our yards at all times, so they would miss that. The other thing I kind of wanted to ask was, and we've been doing this for at least 12 years, probably, talking about this process in back as early as 2001 with the Sherwood, the Sherwood Master Plan. But when we did this last, last time and we were, the applicant mentioned being approved for eight lots, that actually wasn't approved for eight lots. They had applied for eight lots and they were given six. And I don't know what has changed to make seven okay. You know, they actually wanted eight and we, they did the math at the city council and you guys did, we did the math and determined that actually based on, on the density requirements and some other things, that six was the max they could have and that was what was approved. So I don't know what changed to make us consider seven. So I asked maybe we revisit that to see what maybe was conditioned then. Lastly, I guess I wanted to ask that we leave the record open if it, if there should be additional comment needed for after tonight's meeting.
And we do need to see that view easement document as well. It's hard to make a decision whether we're gonna like this proposal or not without seeing that document.
Online?
I am, so I'm gonna see if I. I'm gonna do the best I can with what I have. So the first thing I'm gonna address is your request that the record be held open. And so before we adjourn this evening, we will address a continuation and a continuance. And so I'll look desperately to staff to make sure that I get correct language and how we do a continuance so that the record will remain open correctly and that I get that correct. As you mentioned it, I remember the statements about a view easement and when you say Sheet 11, I see a Sheet 11, but I don't understand how it creates a view easement that would be understandable when they came back with the housing. And that is, that is part of my notes. my notes, and it would be part of my question of the applicant, and I don't know if staff has a better answer, but I don't understand how Sheet 11 or any other document in the application provides a view easement understanding, so that when the housing site plan comes back, the hearing person will be able to understand what that expectation is. You mentioned your CCNRs, is that for your development, or is it in the whole area? It's for, but it doesn't necessarily go to this lot then?
Right.
Okay, so it's just, the CCNRs are specific to the lots that you're on? Okay. All right.
This was one, we have them in our development for the property behind us, and we're just wanting to have that same consideration on the other side of it, which I think we, last time we went through this process, that was determined to be a reasonable request, and I believe the applicant has tried to address it, but we just don't have the information to see.
Right, and I think that would be part of what the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan intent was, was that the neighboring, it would fit in with the neighboring communities, so we'll have to look at the language from the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan that got adopted into the code and see how that works, and we're not going to do all this on the fly.
Right, so just to clarify as far as what changed, right, from 2011 to...
The PUD approval that the City Council did for six lots only for their math, correct?
Right, what changed? In the interim from then, we adopted portions of the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan as part of the very low-density residential PUD, and that's where the provisions in regards to the density increase is allowed, and that's why there's a maximum, you know, based on the buildable net area, the site could be developed for 10, but the applicant's proposing for seven. And there's a difference where the original didn't have those provisions and was limited to the very low-density residential basic zoning.
So the code changed in 2013 with the adoption of...
Yeah, it was a Plan Text Amendment that included that.
I don't either, so...
I remembered that, maybe you can remember where that was?
She gave it to us, it was on page, I remember from your staff report, it was on a particular page. I have my code book with me, so I'm sure staff has one too. All right. Are there any more questions of... We interrupted your four minutes, so I just want to make sure before you leave that you made it three or four minutes.
The, I did have a question on the staff report, actually on page 22 of 66, Staff Analysis at the bottom of that. It isn't in, it is regarding the constraints for the view corridor. The last part of that just says it's required view quarters are met as practicable, and while grammatically that might not be correct, it does also, I wonder what that really means? What, it seems a little bit subject to interpretation at a later time, and that's one of the concerns we have for a lot of this, when you go back and go to the final approval, it will not be a public hearing again, it will be part of the hearing authority, correct? Or the hearings officer?
That's...
Or it'll be a public hearing? It'll go back to Planning Commission as a public hearing? Will be, okay. For that, okay.
And that was my question of staff, because there's confusion from my perspective, because either in the applicant's supplemental or in the staff report, there was a statement that there's an Architectural Review Committee looking at the architectural design book, and I wanted clarification that the Planning Commission would be acting as the Architectural Review Committee during the public hearing process when it came to site plan application.
That is correct.
Yeah, that is correct, and again, it's, we don't do this very often, but if you recall with the Cedar Brookway PUD, I believe what the Planning Commission, you know, Council and ultimately the Planning Commission when it came back to them again, adopted the Architectural Pattern Book, and I believe that there was a requirement that the buildings meet certain things, and so actually Kirsten does the plot plan review, and so when she got a building permit, she would look and say, yep, that's within that color scheme, yes, they've got three different varieties of materials, and so you're not going to be seeing the house, but you'll be seeing the Architectural Pattern Book and the guidelines within the Architectural Pattern Book, and providing specific criteria that would then be utilized by staff in a very clear and objective manner, so that when the plot plan reviews are being done for the homes...
Right, right, and just based on, there's another PUD that was done 25, 30 years ago, that the, oh, thank you, that the Design Guideline Pattern Book is a sheet of paper that is not very clear, and so every time that PUD comes before us and as phases develop, we're going, hmm, this one piece of paper isn't a very good demonstration of how a design pattern book should be, and so that, again, is after I'd heard testimony, I wanted to make, bring this to the attention of the Planning Commission, that the design book, as submitted by the applicant, will be what we will be held accountable for and the standard that the applicant will be using, and so I want to make sure that we all know that in this big thick binder, there's a set of pictures, and that's what the house designs that they'll be picking from, and that's what we have to hold, that's the standard that we will be reviewing when it comes back before us.
Just to clarify, the Architectural Pattern Book that the applicant submitted is what they're proposing they be reviewed by? You can change that, so...
Correct.
Yeah, so I just wanted...
So, if we accept it without looking at it, then we will have exactly what's in this book, so as part of this hearing process, we should make sure that the design specifications in this design book are not only what we would want in the area, but it has to meet the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan, which calls for houses in the development to be similar in, compatible, thank you, to the neighboring thing, to the neighbors. So that's one of the things we'll need to review as we go through the hearing process, and the color palette matches the neighbor's color palette.
And if I might add, if there are some homes that might be one-story with daylight basements to address this view corridor we're talking about, if they're all two-story homes, that might not fit with what we're talking about to make...
Right, so that's a, that's a big consideration that we'll have to make sure we understand when we're approving this, so, all right.
Lastly, I guess just the desire for flexibility of positioning these on the property, et cetera, while after the approvals is something that I want to just try and be as clear in the conditioning as we can, so we don't get something we don't want at a later time, because I know that can happen.
Thank you.
I have to say one thing. The people that were up in front of us made it sound like the DEQ, that we have a hazardous material situation on this property, and someone who lives on that property or behind it and has the same situation going on, it is really a non-human health issue, and the fact that it's just sitting there with a layer of topsoil over the top of it, it's very dormant, it actually will become an issue when they start to clear it, so I just want to make sure that you guys understood that part.
All right.
I'm sure you do, but it does make it sound, it's going to be so catastrophic that if we don't do anything.
And I appreciate you saying that, because again, I've been here forever, and I live near the, near the actual tannery site, so I have been...
You don't have three-eyed frogs in your property? Deer with three antlers or...
Yeah, so, yeah, but, you know, like I said, I've been here forever, so I've, you know, I've seen the tannery come and go, and I, but we have a lot of new people and people in the audience that need to hear what it is, and it's not a...
It is something that needs to be dealt with.
It needs to be dealt with, but you don't have to wear a hazmat suit in your backyard today.
And we have a well and perfect water, and so, in fact, the way they're going to remediate it is by covering it up with dirt, and that's essentially what it is right now, covered up with dirt, so it's the digging that will be done, but it has to be done.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. The first tough one, Naomi Abrams Reinstein. You just want to go last? Okay. Christine Stone? All right. Yes, you do, and, I know, and you get to make sure that the green light is on. If you just depress the button about three seconds, it'll turn green, and just state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Christine Stone. I live at 23553 Southwest Robson Terrace. I always have to spell it, R-O-B-S-O-N, nobody gets it right. Sherwood, Oregon, 97140. So, and my husband's unfortunately not here tonight to speak as well, but I'm not opposed nor for this development. I'm actually here because I would like to speak to the Track E specifically, my home butts up to that track directly, as well as the proposed lot number four. I sort of kind of teeter on both sides of that. So the DEQ cleanup I'm concerned about, as it all seems to want to be piled up in Track E. I'm not sure what that will look like, what, if there's specifics that I could get to know, you know, what's going to actually happen there. It says it's a nonusable soil containment area, and there's also talk about it being maintained, who's maintaining it? Is it part of the CCNRs of this development that's happening there? It's currently not being touched at all, that whole area has never been maintained in the years that I've lived next to it. It's actually what I consider to be a hazard, as it is now. The wetlands that it also borders, who owns that property? I don't know, who's responsible for that as well? There's a fencing, and I say fencing with quotes, because it's just a round fence. What's going to happen to that area? Is that included in this? Is it not? It's hard to tell based on the mapping there, but my main concern mostly is Track E and how that impacts my property. And when it says soil containment, and I heard some talk about when you remove it, what's going to happen there as opposed to layer it? I live on a very sloping lot, so are we building a berm next to my lot, or are we, what are we doing? What's the plan for Track E is where my concerns are.
Very good questions, and I see staff hurriedly writing, and there is a lot of technical information in the application.
Right, so I can verify that based on the maintenance table that the applicant provided, Track E will be maintained by the Homeowners Association.
Which I would not be a part of because I live in a separate neighboring...
Correct, for the seven parcels.
So, and we can ask the applicant more information about how the remedial work works with DEQ. I read, I, there's a lot to read, but I was reading that DEQ is having them take stuff away to Hillsboro and do something with it over there, but your question about what is Track E going to look like is a really good question, and I think we probably...
Is there vegetation, is there going to be vegetation on it? Is there, you know...
Yeah, I think we need to know...
Is it going to be roped off? Is it going to be concreted? I mean, like...
What's the landscaping going to look like? And I, I think those are really valid concerns and questions that will get answered before we send it on to council for...
Okay, wonderful, thank you. And then, I think that was it for me, actually.
All right, and...
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, and just so, so you understand, and everybody in the audience understands, as the Planning Commission for this part of the hearing, we hear public testimony, we'll make a recommendation to the City Council, and they'll make a final decision about where the lot lines are going to be for the PUD, and they'll have another set of hearings at the City Council, so there'll be another opportunity to speak. You'll want to follow it up there to make sure that what the applicant takes up to the City Council, you know, you understand what the City Council is reviewing, the staff will provide the same similar staff report to what we heard tonight with whatever recommendations or changes that we make. So there'll be a second opportunity for you to testify and get more information. It's already been asked by someone that's testified previously for a continuance, so depending on how the commission votes, we will in some form continue our hearing, whether we keep it open only as a written record or if we continue it fully, we'll make a determination before we close our hearing tonight to let you know whether you'll provide more written testimony, or we'll take additional oral testimony at our next hearing, so you'll want to make sure you stay to the end, so that, or if you can't stay, that you stay in contact with staff, because they'll let you know what opportunities are available, and then once the PUD's approved, this whole thing comes back to us again when the individual houses are going to be approved as a site plan. So it's a little bit of a long process, you want to stay tuned.
All right, wonderful, thank you so much.
And again, we're citizen volunteers up here, so again, really detailed, accurate information comes from staff.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a point of order question, or I think that this, it's actually been great to hear comments and staff providing some response, but that's not really the way we typically are doing it, so I want to make sure that...
We're taking four-minute testimony and trying to answer questions if we can.
Well, yeah, I guess that's the question, is do you want staff to answer at each person that comes up, or wait until the end and provide sort of a more general response? Which would you prefer? Or you just ask staff questions if you want it answered then?
That seems to be how I'm running it right now. I don't have, I'm sorry, you're right, I've gone a little bit off script, because oftentimes we just take a bunch of testimony and then hear it afterwards, but it's working, and I feel that people are getting the information timely, so it...
I think it's more timely.
It's more timely, and there is a lot of information with a lot of different subject matters. Sometimes it's 17 people with all the same questions, so it's easy to just await to staff for one, but we've got a lot of different things coming up, so thank you, I wish I had a...
Oh, and, I'm so sorry.
Yes.
And there are trees on Track C, I live there, well, right next to it, so...
Okay. All right. I only have one more blue card, so if there's anybody else that wishes to testify this evening before we call on the last person, okay. So, and all we ask is if you want to come up and testify that you complete a blue card...
I see the green light.
And you have your name and address before you begin testi...
My name's Tony Weller, I live at 14323 Southwest Whitney Lane, Sherwood View Estates. I can just get my name on the record, and also I'm just a little curious, oh, I didn't get a staff report, I got this, just a connection from Denali to...
Ironwood.
Ironwood, thank you, I drew a blank there. I just was trying to visualize how that, is Ironwood private? It is public, okay, I wasn't sure about that, but I'm just trying to, really just want to get my name on the record, no other comments, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and if you could for the, so I don't get downgraded for my performance tonight, fill out the blue card. Anymore. So I believe Naomi, if you... All right.
My name is Naomi Abrams Reinstein, I live at 16433 Southwest Wild Life Haven Court. We are new to this area, moved here in May from inner-city Portland, and I have a couple of questions. We discovered this space... We discovered this space quite by accident in looking for open space within the city. It is, as I'm sure all of you know, probably the last open space in the city. I visit it with my husband probably three times a week, observing deer, birds that fly out of the wetland area. And I think that it's a travesty to let it go. I think you are headed toward Portland and I think you better be aware. I know people are entitled to develop space. There are agencies that will develop this land. There are land trusts that will purchase the land on behalf of the city. And I think it's something that probably the city should be looking into. You have no other space like this, it's a real treasure. Having said that, I have a couple of questions. The road Ironwood is a lane, but I don't think we even give it credence as a street. Is it going to be able to maintain the traffic that will be required to get construction trucks in and out of that area? That's number one. Without disturbing what's to the north of that property, which is the barn, the madrona trees, and the deer, whatever wildlife's in there. The runoff area from the, the area that the soil is supposed to be put into, or now it says taken away, whatever, is that going to impact the wetland areas that runs off down? Right now, there's a berm there. Will that berm remain there separating those two areas? The area of the water and the area where this housing is being built? I also want to point out, there's a lot of talk about, there was some talk about an open space, which in looking at the math, if it's clear, is a very, very small space. And I wanted to have language clarified that a park bench and a table do not make an open space. They make a little park and that's all that is. I'm not sure, I don't know what the price point of these homes are going to be, but I can't imagine that they're going to be welcoming people into that space. Clearly, that's something that should be looked at if it is advertised as part of the package of being an open space. The other question I had was, do we have an idea with these big lots? What the price point is of the homes in there? What is the range and does it matter as to the upkeep of that lot that I think is lot E, which we were referring to as the area that is the, where the contaminated soil is going to be taken from? Or it's unclear what that is. Those are my points. I think, again, it's probably, it may be too late at this point to say you need to look at this as a very, very special area. Maybe because you pass it often and you're not new to it, you don't understand how special it is and what a loss it will be. Many people use this area. I don't know if you know, babies walk in there with their parents. There's always somebody in there observing nature. And I think it's something that should be seriously taken into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, Bob, just for clarification, the Ironwood Lane construction traffic, is that the? Just want to make sure that- Or would they go through Denali? Or is it?
No, Ironwood will be able to handle it.
And, and it could handle the construction traffic? Okay.
If they damage the road, they'll have to repair it. There's always that. We have, we have construction traffic going all over different roads throughout the city. If we notice that they are damaging the road, then we're going to make them repair the road. So that isn't my concern right now. Does there, is there enough room after construction is done? Can the road be utilized? Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I think the question regarding the berm and tract E, I think that is a bigger question that we've already asked and we haven't, I, I don't feel we've gotten a good, clear answer. And maybe I missed it in the plans of what the final look on tract E is going to be.
I'm not sure how it's going to look at, at the end.
Because that's going through Clean Water Services, DEQ, and three other agencies.
I do know that when, before, before a development gets final out and approved, it has to be stabilized, which means there can't be any runoff occurrence. Basically, the soil has to be stabilized. Either it's covered by buildings and grass and planted, or bark dusted, or strawed in, or whatever's necessary to keep that soil in place. It has to be taken care of. So if it's erosion control measures that you're worried about, that is typically taken care of. If it's, how is it going to look?
The landscaping?
The landscaping and stuff like that, that's a little bit beyond what I normally deal with.
And that's beyond where we're just, is, is the landscaping and how this part's going to look part of this PUD process versus just the regular site plan approval for tree canopy?
I, I think it's normally that, but you also have the added issue of the DEQ and DEQ is going to require certain things as well. And so I think there's a lot of things that we don't know.
But we should be able to know before we make a final decision what the landscaping plan's going to be, whether it's at the PUD decision or prior to site plan. There'll be a complete landscaping plan for that area.
So, sorry, I'm looking to Joy to go, do you have the answer to that? Obviously, we're not going to have a decision or a recommendation this evening. What I would recommend is that-
Gather them.
Maybe Joy, talk to DEQ and kind of see what level of information we will have and maybe propose a condition that would be prior to the final development plan approval, doing something if we can get more details on what that something is. We've heard a lot and I'm sure that, you know, we're going to recommend some, some modified conditions as a result and certainly have some more information to answer a lot of the questions that have been raised.
Okay, so we do have a lot of, I know the applicant has a rebuttal opportunity and I have yet to make final calls for blue cards for proponents and opponents. So based on the last, on Naomi's application, we still have some unanswered questions about berm and tract E. And I, I think it's a going-forward question, we don't have an answer right now. And so before we go any further, are there any other proponents or opponents that would like to come up and testify? You can come on up. And I don't even get to- Yeah, sure, bring it on up. We're, now I have to try and pronounce Megan Rollins.
That's okay.
We knew, we knew it was going to be wrong. All right, Megan.
So I'm Megan Rollins.
Thank you.
My address is 23364 Southwest Murdock Road, Sherwood, Oregon 97140. I have a question on about Ironwood Lane. Right now, it's basically a one, one-car road? That's really going to handle that traffic in and out of that subdivision? Because I'm kind of thinking that other cars from that subdivision would probably use that same road. And I'm also concerned about the site distance from the curve on Murdock to that lane? How that traffic gets backed up? Is, if that's a safety issue at all? The distance, I don't know.
I, I see that it's already a condition in here that-
Is it?
And I don't have the language in front of me. And we'll let you finish if you have any other questions.
That's pretty much it.
Okay, because our, Bob Galati is the, I don't know your official title, but you are the very knowledgeable transportation-
I'm the city engineer.
City engineer, but officially, you're my transportation go-to guy.
Which sounds like a-
I answer a question.
So he'll be able to answer most of these questions before, certainly before we go any further, but.
Right.
All right.
And the family of deer.
Okay, and, and the deer. And so, question on, on the traffic. I don't know if we want to have another, all right, so. All right, and-
Jeff Burris, 14224 Southwest McKinley Drive, Sherwood. On the Ironwood Street, the one-lane path, is it currently, does it currently have city of standard street lighting? And if we're putting sidewalks up Denali, are we going to bring sidewalks down Ironwood Lane to access this green space and stuff? Will that street be developed with curves and sidewalks and current city lighting? Or is it just going to, to get to these parks, are you going to go up into Sherwood View Estates and dump down to these?
And, and I'm glad Bob's here to answer the question because I thought they were doing an improvement all the way. I thought that was the tract A dedication.
I'm not saying that there's not, I mean, I'm not that-
Tract A does have sidewalks that are going to be putting on, putting in. They're meandering because they're existing street trees. And there will be a street lighting put along Ironwood Lane, along, pardon me? Sidewalks on the tract A, on the pathway. They're going to be, there's going to be a meandering pathway on the, on tract A.
X2 Murdock.
Which connects to Murdock. So you will have, you'll have a complete access from Murdock Road along that meandering pathway, paralleling Ironwood Lane, and then going up to public sidewalk up Denali and connecting in.
Thank you.
Just to, maybe, sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah, because I was just about to ask how wide the, wide the road was going to be. Go ahead.
I can't find it back in the documentation, but I swear I remember reading that Ironwood was going to be widened.
It is.
Okay, so it will be widened one, one-way each way?
It's going to be a two-lane street.
Okay.
Correct.
As part of this development?
As part of this development, it is going to be an unfinished road on the north side because that is a separate lane. So it, it basically half this road, more than half this roadway width necessary for at least two 11-foot lanes is going to be, it, it's going to be there. To extend the, the improvements on the other side, which are, I believe, the north side of Ironwood Lane would be dependent on development of the area north of Ironwood Lane.
So they're doing their-
They're doing their proportionate share of their development for Ironwood Lane, which includes the property that they have that fronts it. Which includes dedication and-
So they're doing a half-street improvement?
Basically a half-street, bringing it up to a half-street, which is more than a single lane. It's almost two lanes.
Right.
So, just to clarify, at the conclusion of this construction, will there be, can two cars drive in opposite directions on Ironwood Lane?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's no parking on?
No parking.
Correct. And that, when we go to site plan, we'll designate no parking areas and parking only on one side on Denali Lane and, and all the other details that have to do with parking. All right, so hopefully that helps clarify that with Denali. All right, so before we call the applicant up, are there any other proponents, opponents, or neutral parties that are not applicants to the application tonight? All right. I don't not remember how many minutes they had left for-
Fourteen.
Fourt-, you are so good. Fourteen minutes left for rebuttal for this evening and potential questions from commission. Okay. All right.
My name is Lynn Green. I'm a licensed geologist in the state of Oregon. Work of Creekside Environmental. Address PO Box 14488, Portland, Oregon 97293. So one of the questions was regarding tract E with regards to the remedial action. The remedial action on the property as a whole involves both soil removal from the site as well as consolidation of soils. State of Oregon requires any soils that have a greater concentration of .3 milligrams per kilogram, parts per million on any of the parcels that we developed, the dwellings either be capped or removed. And what the applicants decided to do in the abundance of caution is actually remove most of the soil from the property. It's going to be managed at a subtitle D landfill facility in Hillsborough, where it can be properly managed. Most of the higher concentration soils will be taken to that facility as it's stipulated in the work plan that's been approved by the state of Oregon DEQ. Much of the lower concentration soils that are, and these are superficial soils, so they're not actually buried on the property like it was indicated in some of the other questions that were posed. These are at the surface. And they do exceed the state's health-based direct contact or dermal contact to health standards for a future resident or current resident. Those soils would be consolidated in tract E in a burrow pit. So in other words, soils would be removed from tract E that can be later used as fill material on the property elsewhere, and those would be clean soils. And then impacted soils would then be placed within that burrow pit area in tract E and then would be covered with a layer of soil and vegetated. And I believe there's, in the plans that were submitted, creating plans sent to the city, it has the profile for that. And I did show one of the people that asked them the questions that profiled so that she saw it in the plans.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I was waiting to see if there's more because I've got, yeah.
There was a question about whether or not the impacts to soil are hazardous or not. And the state has actually determined that the impacts to soil are a hazard to future and current residential use. Again, the concentration that's health-based is .3 milligrams per kilogram. And the concentrations on this site in many of the locations are over an order of magnitude above that. And so there is an unacceptable risk from exposure to these soils on the property as is. And they are not covered with a, a minimum layer of 12 inches of soil that the state would require to, to make the soils, you know, safe in terms of dermal contact. They're actually at the surface. And so the remedial action that's been approved by the state in terms of removing the soils from the site and consolidating some of the residual soils that are lower impact on the property and then providing a foot of cover of soil across all future previous areas on the site is in line with trying to mitigate that risk on the property from the exposure to these surface soils.
Couple of questions. The final foot that's going on there is probably coming from off-site then?
Correct, and that soil has to be tested prior to import to the property.
If it's only a foot deep, then do the CCNRs or some other method within the homeowners association tell future residents? Or is it, like, if I wanted to plant a garden, how deep can my potatoes grow before I have to be worried about it? Or your remedial action will make it? Because it's, you get an NFA letter. Does that mean to a residential standard that enables gardens and backyards?
As long as you meet the residential standard of .3. The state's determined that concentrations of hexanachromium at .3 or less are equivalent to background concentrations in the area. So the goal of the remedial action is to leave no concentrations of hexanachromium in surface soils on the property greater than .3.
And surface soils, how, to what depth? Three feet. Okay. All right, any other rebuttal before we ask questions? I don't want to get confused and get out of order here.
I just wanted to, for the record, emphasize that the plan set and the narrative that was submitted clearly shows the improvements to Ironwood Lane. A five-foot-wide meandering concrete pathway, a new curb and gutter, eight feet of additional pavement, the 50-foot existing Southwood Ironwood Lane, the amount of right-of-way dedication, and the 100-foot existing easement for Ironwood Lane. There appeared to be a lot of confusion about that, so I just wanted to point out that on sheet one of the submitted plan set, all of those items are clearly delineated. Sheets nine and 10 of the submitted plan set clearly outlines the proposed landscape plan for the tract A usable open space, the tract B water quality facility, the tract D usable open space, and the tract E open space. Tract C is not shown because that comes under Clean Water Services jurisdiction and purview. There is a condition of approval that alludes to that. And that plan will be made as part of the final engineering drawings. It's, it's not intended to be part of the- It's, it's not intended to be part of the, uh, preliminary plan approval.
Track C dedicated to the city then?
There was a, a maintenance, uh, exhibit that was submitted as part of the application that outlines, uh, the ownership and maintenance of all the tracks.
The applicant did propose that Track C be maintained by the city, um, but we did ask Public Works to see if they did want Track C and they basically said that it should, um, they were gonna pass on that and that the homeowners association should...
Right, cuz they don't have, there's no access, it needs to be part of the...
Right, and also in relation to, um, privately-owned parcels abutting it versus they're not city-owned parcels.
Right.
Can I ask a question? There's access, I think, off of Robson Terrace. Does that access go to Track C or does that go somewhere else? Does anybody know? It's just to the right of that triangular property that does this.
So Robson Terrace is a cul-de-sac, so it's a, that's a private house there.
So the, yeah, so the, this... This lot is a private house and then just to the right of it, I believe there's a driveway. Is that, not a driveway to a home, but rather like a public house?
The trail, interesting.
Is that to access Track C or is that?
So on, just below Track C, there's a water quality facility?
Yeah, okay.
And so there's access to that water quality facility, but not to Track C?
Thank you.
Uh, there was some discussion about wetlands and, um, wildlife habitat. Unfortunately, this property is not designated as a significant natural resource. It does not have any designated wildlife habitat on it, um, as per the state definitions. There may be deer on the site, um, but because there is no designated significant natural resource, um, that portion of the code did not have to be addressed. The only portion that is designated as, um, wetlands that needs to be preserved is the area along the, uh, easterly boundary that has been delineated by an environmental, um, consultant that has been approved by Clean Water Services. Clean Water Services has jurisdiction over, uh, these wetlands. The city does not have any designated wetlands. Uh, it's a Clean Water Services jurisdictional wetlands. So the only wetlands on the site, again, are along the easterly, um, boundary that has been delineated, that is being preserved, um, and that is also alluded to in the conditions of approval.
I have a question on that because I got a little confused between a 15-foot offset with a buffer versus, there was something about a cut and like, it's supposed to be 50 feet, but it's only gonna be 25-foot setback. You're asked for a reduced setback from Clean Water Services through their process?
Yes, and through Clean Water Services process, they approved that 15-foot, uh, vegetated corridor instead of a, I believe it was 35. They have, um, and again, that completely comes under Clean Water Services jurisdiction and authority and the necessary documentation was submitted to them and, and they approved it. And that is included in the application packet.
Right, and I saw that. So the easement from Track D to Track E is outside of the Clean Water Services 15-foot corridor?
Yes, yes, it, it has to be, as per the requirement. Just go back to the five-foot side, side setback issue. Um, in consultation with staff over this issue during the break, uh, it was confirmed that where the west edge of the house footprint on Lot 1 is currently shown, that is a side setback. The rear setback, uh, it will actually be, well, I can't describe it, but, um...
The driveway, yes.
Actually is in the driveway. That's the best way to say it. So, um, approving or not approving that adjustment is not, in other words, is not going to affect the west, the placement of the west side of the house. It will only affect the placement of the south wall where the car is facing and then the...
How far the arm goes down?
Southeasternly wall, yeah.
So, I, I do have a question about that and staff. So if that 10-foot line were drawn across that corner, parallel with Denali Lane, and then from that 10-foot line measured, would, would the, would the basic setback be 20 feet from that 10-foot line? So then would any of that structure on Lot 1 cross into that 20-foot area? Or is it clear of that?
Potentially, so, I can pass this around, but when you make the, um, kind of the X here in the parallel line from the, from the 10-foot, um, where this intersects right here, then you, you would look at the 20-yard or 20-foot setback.
So, it's cuz that's what I'm, I'll just come and look at it.
And then can I ask just a bigger question? We are all very concerned about the setback on that piece of property. This is a planned unit development. The requirements within, I'll wait for her to finish, but...
So we probably shouldn't have conversations off the record when we're...
She's just pointing it out.
I know, I just...
And we'll make sure that that X is resubmitted for everyone to understand. Cuz, and, and I think the bigger question is, we all have a need clarification of what the setback requirements are on this. Because it is an irregularly shaped lot and it is a constrained property and we are within the PUD guidelines of kind of having to wiggle everything around while we do this and the over, and within our code, we're supposed to apply the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan buffering standards. Taking all those things into consideration, you know, whether it's a side yard or a backyard or the front yard matters only in as much as are we complying with the Southeast Master Plan of a view corridor and proper buffering? I haven't seen, you know, we, we will need to take further information prior to our next meeting, I think, and we need to get commission input to, you know, where people are.
I, I have a follow-up to that as well. So in looking at this original master plan, um, Denali Lane is configured differently in that than it is in this PUD application. And if you look at that original configuration, that would clearly, the backyard, side yard would be different than what, the way it's defined in this PUD. So I, I'm a little unclear on that, how that affects this, right?
But also I imagine, and staff, you correct me if I'm wrong, but this isn't, this isn't like, what has to be adhered to, to the letter, this is kind of more, um, conceptual, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
A roadway layout, when you're doing it from a conceptual plan, is a flat plane. When you start looking at actual grades, then the constraints come into play and you have to start warping things significantly to take up that grade in this area. That's why you're seeing a different roadway layout is because as much as they may have taken into account certain grades in the layout of the roadway to try and make the connection points, this is actually taking it into account the hard data that's coming from the survey. So that's why there's a, a significant change.
So in the concept plan, there is a park in the center of this because we knew that was the top of the hill and we needed a few roads to go around it, but someone didn't look and figure out how exactly that road was gonna go to meet the curve of the hill in all areas. That, that being said, that's, um, I guess, I, I guess, and I'll just state it, my concern is that when you make a development, and this, this goes to some, the last PUD that we did, the units that were the most dense and had the most impact to their neighbors were the new ones being developed. So they put intensity and smaller lot setbacks in the center of their property and they protected the neighbors by having larger setbacks. So I, while I don't like a lot of variances just because you, you start chipping away the reason for your code and the quality of life we have is because our code creates large, single-family lots with setbacks. But when you do variances on four through seven so that the driveways are shorter, you're impacting the people that are being developed. So people are buying houses knowing that it's done that way. When you're doing setbacks that are existing to the neighbors right there, just like Lot 3's setback needs to be mindful of its neighbor and Lot 4's setback needs to be mindful of its neighbor. My concern is Lot 1 needs to be mindful of its neighbor as much as we can. So I'm, I wanna make sure that when we go through this process, I, that, that is of, of concern and I think we've heard it from several commissioners that when we saw that, we, we had great concern.
Well, and I think when, I imagine that we're gonna get further clarification regarding Lot 1 because per the, per the code, it does seem like the sides of the house, like the original setback in question really seems to be more of a side setback versus a rear setback. And, and so if, if there's, once there's further clarification on the actual rear setback and the space to the house, then I think that'll give us a more concrete answer.
Alright, so do you have any more testimony before we ask a couple more questions?
Well, I just wanted to add that we presented Sheet 11, which is a view corridor section, which was supposed to demonstrate that the houses on Lots 1, 2, and 3 would not affect the views of the existing houses to the west. Clearly, it did not do that. But, uh, the slope of grade is quite a bit lower. It slopes from west to east and with the house designs that, uh, the developer is going to build, um, there won't be any view obstruction.
Hi, I have a couple of questions about that. So I've been looking at Sheet 11 a little bit, if you don't mind me asking. Um, so in looking at, let's say, Section C to C' prime, um, so it shows where the existing, uh, property line is essentially and, and then the, where the, the Denali Lane will be, which is about 15 feet lower potentially than, um, the private drive proposal, which my question is, is how much lower or what's the, the variance there between that and let's say the back of the house that's significantly further to the west? Um, cuz that, that helps me understand like what that view obstruction is. If the house is another 20 feet above, then you, you, you make a good point. If it's level to that, uh, property line, then maybe not. And also I don't see on the cross-section the height of the proposed, um, houses being constructed in both A, B, and C. That shows me that, the, the height, the cross-section shows me the height of the, the, the road, Denali Lane and the private driveway, but it doesn't show on there the proposed height of the, of either of the three houses. So I think to help illustrate the view corridor better, those going all the way back to that house if, as possible, and, and also seeing the height of the proposed buildings roughly. Obviously, we're not at site plan approval yet, but those things would help me get a better sense of how that view corridor is being handled or not.
And part of our process should be in the conditions of approval, making sure that what you just clarified is in, in our final conditions, that the height of a building to maintain a corridor has to be better defined.
And I'm not saying that it's not, I'm just saying that it, it's not illustrated on that, on that sheet.
Clearly it's not, I could, sitting back there, I could see. Didn't do a good job with that.
Okay, um, is there any other questions at the applicant? I have some questions, but I wanna give other people, I've been a lot of questions tonight. So, when I opened, and I do not know how you're gonna find it in our other binder, but it is three or four orange sheets of paper into this. There is the Denali Lane PUD Architectural Pattern Book. And, again, previous experience from our last PUD, I now know how important the pattern book is in what the final design's going to look like. And what Southeast Sherwood Master Plan's objective was, was to be complementary or compatible with, um, houses in the neighborhood. And when I looked at the design specifications, the building elevations on the bottom to the traditional ones, um, fit beautifully within what's already existing in the neighborhood. But I was concerned both by the pictures that are depicted in the contemporary and the modern views and the statement in the applicant's submittal that the modern view is, um, complimentary to, and it came out something like complimentary to the Portland metro area, new to the area. And I thought, if this is, if new, modern, and contemporary are new to the Sherwood marketplace, then we are not making a pattern book that is compatible or complementary to the existing homes in the area. And, um, the paint scheme, I believe, if I went back to the color palette, was, and, and I maybe don't understand it well enough, if everything was alabaster, snowbound, pure white, creamy, and gray. Um, and there's some other exterior colors. I just, I think when we do that, we should probably make sure we understand cuz that area has a lot of homes that have brick, rock, green, brown. They're very natural in color. And so while understanding that not every house should be exactly the same and we don't want everything the same, we probably also don't want bright white, bright yellow houses to complement, so I'm...
I, I would certainly echo the, the concerns about the architectural elevations. Um, I think it'd be a pretty jarring transition to drive from the existing part of Denali Lane to potential new development with that. That, that, that would be a pretty jarring transition to me walk, driving from one house to the next cuz I've been up there too and they look a lot more like the bottom.
Right, so I don't think it's our job to redesign the design book, but I would, at the continued hearing, not feel comfortable supporting the, the designs. And I just wanna get the rest of the commissions, you know, so the applicant would have an opportunity before the next hearing that we don't bring it to them at final decision to say, "And we're gonna, um, not approve the design book."
I mean, it seems like...
So are your concerns specifically on the modern, contemporary, and the colors?
I, can I?
Yes, please.
So, um, in terms of the exterior elevations, I don't personally have a huge concern. Um, I think that depending on the exterior finishes, you can actually blend things in pretty nicely in terms of combining the lines with the finishes. And you can mix those housing types, okay. I would just ask that that be paid special consideration so that you don't make it a jarring, like, modern house and then very traditional house, you know? Um, just so that you can kind of have an easy transition there.
And so what we'll probably need from staff is direction on how to... We are going to be the Architectural Review Committee and we are working with a design code book. So I don't know if we're gonna have an answer tonight, but that's the concern, right?
If I may, um, my observation is, is that first of all, Sherwood View Estates being our competition, our neighbor. The styles of those homes, first of all, those homes were not built under the, the guidelines of an Architectural Pattern Book. Those were built by, for the most part, Jerry Reeves. Um, and Jerry had his own CCNRs, uh, guidelines that he dictated the construction of his homes, but he controlled that, that. But those homes, by garage doors, by use of brick, by use of cultured stone, which is integrated and mixed throughout the subdivision of those homes, by the pitch of the roofs... integrated and mixed throughout the subdivision of those homes, by the pitch of the roofs, several, uh, architectural elements are kind of, have kind of created a style, and oftentimes home styles, um, um, establish a image and kind of a date, and date the house. You can drive through that subdivision, the very nice homes, and they've maintained themselves very nicely. But you can also drive through there and say, gee, these homes were built in nineteen ninety, nineteen ninety-five. Uh, what we were trying to do, we were trying not to build a nineteen ninety-five style of home. We're looking at, um, a, a style of home that would complement, be complemented in the neighborhood, and be consistent with where the, the direction, the styles of the home designs are going in today's market. We're building in five or six different markets right now, and we are seeing that there's a much higher demand for that contemporary and modern style house. The other feature of the contemporary house is that it, it lowers the pitch of the roof considerably. A traditional home is going to create a very steep, uh, a pitched roof and a very high ridge. So building that style of house, especially across Lots One, Two, and Three, and you're building a steep pitch, you're raising the ridge up that much higher, you're invading that corridor, that view corridor that you're trying to protect. So reducing, um, I've been building for a long time. We used to build what was called a Northwest Contemporary, back in the seventies and early eighties. And, I don't call these a Northwest Contemporary, but they kind of evolved into a, a, a new style of contemporary home. That's what we are seeing is happening, that's what we see here is building. So we're looking at and hoping that we're gonna have the opportunity to be building into the future and not building into the past. And I'm hoping that we can come up with a design that's gonna complement, that's gonna make everybody happy, uh, that's gonna complement the adjacent neighborhoods. But at the same time, I'm hoping that I'm not gonna be restricted to have to build nineteen ninety-five.
And so I, I hear that, and it's goo-, so before our next hearing, we will work with staff, we'll get input, we'll have a commission discussion about it. But what does that mean? Let's say we, okay, well, we'll be all, we'll be okay with all six of these pitchers, and when it comes in for Architectural Review, what level does the Architectural Review Committee have in saying, oh, that became the shocking view that we're concerned about?
I'm confused, and clearly Eric is too. I don't think it's envisioned that every home is gonna come to the Planning Commission, so I'm not sure where-
It's in the, it was in the applicant's material as part of the design review.
So that, that's not the way we normally process things, so I wanna-
I thought that's what, so it says Architectural Review Checklist, New Home Construction, and this is Architectural Review Meeting Date. I, I perceive that when they came in for site plan, that they were going to be having us look at the compliance with their design standards that the buildings complied with.
Normally, with the, the second phase of the PUD, if you know-
I understand, yeah.
It's, you're approving the subdivision, and you're making sure that they're complying with the conditions that you laid out at this high level, and that's where it's, you know, what the Architectural Pattern Book is, and the components, and then, 'cause generally, we don't bring every home into site for a site plan review. There's really no process in our current process to do anything like that. So I'm not sure what they were envisioning when they proposed an Architectural Review Committee, but I would strongly recommend that that not be the process, since we don't have a process to review individual plans.
I, I was under the impression we were just talking about the general vision for the subdivision and the general, like, the pattern book and the color palettes, that sort of thing. I don't, I wasn't under the impression anybody was thinking we were going to individually review homes.
I, 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 that's my envision, and again, I would recommend that we not do that, but obviously, we need to make sure that the Planning Commission and ultimately Council understands what it is that they're approving.
Thank you. I was gonna say, I agree. So at the fi-, at the time of final site plan review, you will be essentially, like, adopting the pattern book. I see what, what you're looking at on page, on page ten.
Well, it also says on page three, over three, the overall design structures are subject to final approval by the Architectural Review Committee, which is the question I asked at the beginning of the hearing, is are we acting as the Architectural Review Committee for this process?
In the sense that you will be adopting the, the pattern book. Now, once that pattern book is adopted, and if this, if this plan is adopted, then at the time of building permits, um, we'll take a look at each lot through that process to make sure that it meets the design and the pattern book.
Okay. All right. So does this, so-
So are, are we, are we approving something regarding this and this part of this process?
Yes, as part of this process. If we accept the applicant's design, architectural design book, pattern book as it is, then you're accepting, yes, yes, exactly.
Because I, I don't necess-
You said it exactly right.
Sorry?
Nothing.
Okay. Because I, I would agree with Commissioner Scott and, um, Chair Simpson that, I mean, to, to me, I kind of, you know, we're talking about compatible with existing neighborhoods, and, and also maybe compatibility within itself. And for me, I don't see contemporary, modern, and traditional as being compatible with each other to, to, to such a certain degree. And, and, you know, I, I, I don't really, when I, again, when I think of Sherwood, um, contemporary and modern examples seem more to reflect, I would, I would think something more like Portland versus, versus Sherwood. You know, if we're talking about this specifically, and, and how we, um, you know, if this is the letter that we're gonna have to be, uh, have to go by. I, I, I definitely agri-, I definitely understand the, the benefit that, um, the contemporary lines help with, with keeping roof lines low. But I, I, I just see those as two kind of conflicting, um, points on, on the architecture, at least, so.
That's all we can say. I mean, we, we, we can't, we can't design the, the book for you. You can come, you can bring something back in the next hearing, or you can allow this to go through as is, and we can accept it or not accept it, right? Or we could say, we accept these two, and we would only accept, uh, contemporary if it was representative of, you know, twenty percent of the building, or something. We could, you know, we, you probably don't want us creating your building designs.
Is it reasonable to ask if you have other neighborhoods that combine these types together, that you could maybe provide an example of what it would look like, other than in these renderings? I think these renderings sometimes make it, they're, they tend to be kind of extreme versions of the homes. Do you have other examples you could provide at a later time? Do you have, you know, like, could you give examples of J.C. Reeves homes that are, have contemporary lines that would be similar, just so people could see the transition, or?
I don't think Jerry built any contemporary in Sherwood View Estates. Um, the, again, there's a, there's a, a lot of mixture in different architectural features between one house being fully bricked across the face, one house being accented with brick, one house having cultured stone, one house having kind of a barn door, garage doors, one just being, I mean, there's a mixed match of features in, in, in his subdivision. And for the record, the last nine houses, for what it's worth, the last nine houses that were built in Sherwood View Estates were built by Stonebridge Homes, which is owned by Don Morset, Morset Homes. So, you know, you, you get, um, you got a mixture of, of different product types. And when Don came in and built his, those houses, again, they weren't subject to any specific guidelines. Now, with regards to existing neighborhoods, honestly, we are, we are, um, we are building to what our market demands are, and our market demands right now are contemporary and modern. We're not mixing traditional and contemporary and modern. But I felt that if I just submitted this without the traditional, because I think I heard that somewhere along the line, I thought I was almost required to have to submit something that included some traditional. But our market right now, and we're not building in Portland, we will not build in Portland, we're in Wilsonville, we're in Hillsborough, we're in Tiger, we're in, in Beaverton, um, and the product that we're designing, the product we're building, is a mixture of contemporary and modern.
It's a, you know, just for, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Finish.
So, for example, the neighborhood off of, um, Gardie, would you say that's a mixture of contemporary and modern then?
Uh, no, that was built two years, three, two years ago. We've got one modern house that we're building in there right now.
Right, um, okay.
The, the, the other homes in there are, I don't know that I would call them traditional, because they're not, they don't have, you know, this characteristic of steep pitch. We just finished a house in there that was very contemporary. We're building a house in there that's very modern, uh, and then we're building some, a couple of Mascor plans in there. But they don't, the, the product that we've built in there do not carry those twelve, twelve, ten, twelve, twelve, twelve pitches, and, and, um, and again, the homes, the majority of the homes that we were building were in there, were started, we started those three years ago. And what we're doing now has been something we've been doing for the last eighteen to twenty-four months, is, is incorporating more contemporary and more modern. So, I mean, we're in La Causa, we go on that street is, is a mixture of the two. And again, we've just kind of gotten away, we feel like, it's kind of like, um, oh, what's that style that kind of came and went? Well, styles, they do come and go. And, and, um, and traditional's been around a long time, and we went through probably about an eight-to-ten-year phase of do-, doing a lot of traditional, but we are definitely something new, something fresh.
So I thought you were done, sorry.
I just said thank you. It was landing.
So, you know, just, just for my, just to clarify, you know, from my point of view, I, I think the contemporary and modern examples here are wonderful. Um, and, you know, in a, in a brand-new development that didn't abut another one, I'd love it. My concern, you know, right here is that Lot Three and Lot Four are direct neighbors on the same street with, with two existing homes, one each, that are of a different style. And so, you know, I, I guess I'm looking for maybe, is there, realizing you have a whole range to work with, and probably borrowing things from all, is there, is your vision that you, you plan to kind of ease that transition, you know, maybe those Lots Three and Four blend a little bit more, or they're in between, you know, like, maybe something over on Lot Seven or Lot One is, is more, is more an example of this, and something on Lot Four or Three is maybe a little bit more of a hybrid, where you kind of get an, as you drive down Denali Lane, you, instead of crossing a line in the road and suddenly seeing a completely different style, that you kind of get a more gradual transition? I mean, is that something in your guys' mind, as you're, as you're gonna design these homes, or is it just, w- we don't care, we're, I'm not saying you don't care, but we, we're just gonna, we're gonna cross that line in the road, and it's gonna be clear that we've entered a new neighborhood, even though we really haven't from a street standpoint? So I would, you know, I think that's the concern I have, and, and I'm, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I'm just trying to understand what your guys' vision is, and how, how that experience, walking or driving down that road, would be for people.
But I think bigger impact's going to be Lots Four, Five, Six, and Seven, the ones on the right side, uh, Lots One, Two, and Three, the front elevations.
Agreed, yeah.
And so it's going to, quite honestly, you're right, um, seven lots, it's not a large neighborhood, so it's not going to be easy to mix a lot of different styles into the seven lots. Uh, we typically do a design streetscape, um, design our houses, just to kind of visualize and see how those houses are going to look on. Five homes in La Causa, we go where we've got a contemporary, a modern, two contemporaries, and a modern, and they kind of fit each other, and they fit nicely. I, I highly de-, I don't see us putting a modern on Lots Three or Four, right next to as it, as it transitions from Sherwood View Estates into our lots. Quite honestly, I haven't even thought of where we might put a modern-style house. If we did, it would probably be on the very end of the street, on Lot Seven, and we'd probably only do the one. The rest of the homes, uh, would probably end up being, I mean, we, we haven't, we're not far enough along to start designing the product, um, but the homes that are exemplified in here are homes that we have built, uh, well, of the contemporary and the moderns, not the traditionals, although we have built those traditionals too. But, um, these are, um, these four homes up on top are homes that were, that we just recently designed, um, and built. So, um, I, I don't have an absolute guarantee as to what plan would be going on Three or Four. I understand what your argument is, and I completely get that, but Lot Three, again, is going to be viewed from up on top. I'm not sure you're gonna see a deck from the, from Denali, or something, or a patio. And I, I know the person that built the house right next to Lot, uh, Lot Three, so I know his style, and I know the way he builds, and, you know, he builds a very good house, so I don't have a direct answer for you, but, I don't know.
So, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it sounds like to me that there's really no intention of, of building traditional-style home on, on these seven lots?
That, that was not my intention.
Okay. And, a- and so, you know, understanding that we as the commission, you know, might have this responsibility in terms of looking at, at this issue, um, you know, I definitely feel that contemporary and modern homes have, have, you know, have a certain place. Um, my genuine, general concern with contemporary and modern is that it always will date when they were made. There's, you know, when, when you referenced previously that you don't want to build a nineteen nineties home, well, you, you'll be building a twenty-twenty home, which in twenty-fifty or twenty-sixty, people will look back and say, oh, that's so twenty-twenty. So I, I, I don't, you know, I mean, there's a reason why, you know, timeless tra-, traditional classic homes, um, have, have a certain appeal. To me, that's something that seems to be a part of Sherwood, and if it's our responsibility and, and as part of this process to, to look at that, that would be my concern, so.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
I, I think part of the Southeast Sherwood Master Plan objectives that we're supposed to be complying with is fitting in with the neighborhood, and so, I, I mean, I, I would like to, I mean, we're gonna continue this hearing, so I don't know, um, be informative to get more information, any more testimony about how that process works, um, and what by, by knowing that they're not building traditional, and the contemporary or modern has a, has a purpose for getting low, flat roofs, is that what we want to know that we're gonna be getting in Sherwood? You know, that's obviously something we're probably gonna have to think about while we decide whether or not we're gonna accept the pattern book as it is.
And Chair Simpson, if I may, I think that, um, hopefully, they're listening and hearing, and when they come back to the Planning Commission at the next meeting, they have, or before, uh, there is a response to address your concerns, such that, um, it, it addresses your concerns, and if not, then I think, like you said, they have the choice of, or with a recommendation.
That doesn't accept it, yeah.
But I, you know, hopefully, um-
Yeah, so they have an opportunity to provide information that will ease our minds and make us feel more comfortable that the seven homes they're building will fit within the community.
I, I do want to agree with you, you know, that I do feel that Lots One, Two, and Three probably would be a good opportunity, because they are, you know, further separated from the street and, and, and away from Lots Four, Five, Six, and Seven, um, in conjunction with keeping roof lines low, um-
And providing adequate buffering to the neighbors on that side.
Yeah. I think when we're talking about traditional classic homes, I, I think it gets to be more of the concern back to Four, Five, Six, and Seven, as you mentioned, so.
Couple of things to change completely subjects. Page fifty-five on the staff report says they're not gonna put any handicap ramps on the street cut at the curbs. I was just curious why we weren't doing that. To, to move, to completely move to something else. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I hit it, it's getting late, and I know there's a- Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I hit it, it's getting late and I know there's a, a lot of information that we've asked for that the staff's gonna have to bring back to us, so I'm just gonna hit some technical things between now.
Yeah, so I'm sort of to staff, I'm gonna, because it looks like you're trying to answer that question. It sounds like you're raising a question that you want to make sure staff addresses at the next hearing, so you don't want an answer tonight.
Sure, they can do that.
Is that correct?
We'll go with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I, I'm, I am nothing if I'm not flexible. As demonstrated by my previous answer of, well, doing it a little different now. Um, one of the other concerns that I'll be addressing with the applicant at the continuation or when we make our deliberation is, um, adequate screening of the hammerhead and the buffering between your project site and the neighbors. Um, those three cars coming in and shining headlights into the neighbor, I, I, I know that it's probably at site plan, but we are very close to that, um, property line. And if, if and when that redevelops or even just courtesy to the existing neighbors, what buffering is, is gonna be provided? I, I don't believe that it's adequate. I had put in there that I did, I actually didn't agree with the, um, staff report that it was necessary that they even have to have a shared access driveway. Because the original plans that they had submitted had three lots, four lots that were gonna be accessed from Denali and there was gonna be big backyards on the backside and all the lots were gonna access from Denali. So, I, I understand that changed, um, and I didn't even know if Lot One could access from Denali and the, you know, and have that part, that house be even lower by putting, coming in from, from Denali. But, um.
Can I comment to?
Oh, yeah.
Um, at that hammerhead, um, uh, on one of the pages on the engineering design, uh, it, it provides a top- a topography map. If you look at the, the proposed grade of that hammerhead and you look at that relationship to the grade as a great elevation elevation up to the neighboring property, I, the building pad of that neighboring house, which is just about a hundred and fifty feet high or so, it, it's probably something in the neighborhood of about fifteen feet high. So, as you're pulling up that hammerhead, what your headlights are shining into is an empty. And it's not even, it's not gonna come close to shining into a house, an existing house.
Okay, so even when the, when or if that, they subdivide and they build another harsh right there.
They're gonna have to deal with the grade issues and how they're going to construct houses on that grade. Is that because, so, I, I can only assume that they're not gonna be building houses down at the grade elevation of our screen on Hammerhead, but that they're gonna be building at the higher elevation.
Okay.
I can't, I can't tell you exactly how that's gonna develop and I can look at it from a practical sense. And say that it's, there's a lot of topography that they're gonna have to address.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. So, and the view, the view corridor in those other pictures may help clarify how that buffering's gonna be not impactful to the neighbors. Are there any other, um, applicants of the, or concerns that, I mean, it's only fair to the applicant. If you have concerns, we're not gonna sandbag you and say, oh, next time, we're gonna say, all of a sudden, we're not gonna agree with something. So, we're just trying to get it out there so that you know what concerns you have to address before the next continuation. So, if anybody else has any other concerns or questions.
I think it's already going to be addressed, but I'm still concerned about the removal of B as in boy fourteen. Tree preservation.
Agreed.
I just want to confirm that I think one of, it's, I mean, nobody can argue it's really nice if you have natural trees in a neighborhood that have been there for a long time. It's just always nice to leave those and build around them. You can always find a way to do that. I know it's not necessarily easier, um, and I, I would have to go look at the site. So, maybe just confirming that there indeed are no trees to preserve, um, would be what I would be asking for.
There's a small grove, I think, uh, in the back corner of Lot Three. Um, uh, I think we looked at that and I thought, I think we talked with Lynn Green about that. Um, and I, I believe as part of our DEQ cleanup, they're requiring to clean the whole site, which bites into that small grove. So, one, one of the thoughts of removing those trees is the fact that that's going to give us the satisfaction that DEQ's looking for is that we're cleaning the complete total site. And it's, it's relatively small grove, I don't think the trees are, are monumental, but.
Yeah, I, I think, um, just being a citizen of the community for over twenty years and feeling like I know the family of deer who hang out around there and, you know, hear the birds as I walk and stuff, I just, um, I'm, I'll just admit it, I'm sensitive to it. So, um, it is a special area, so anything that could be done to preserve it as we continue to grow it, or grow it, would be nice.
Can I ask a question on timing? I continue to hear this, uh, continuance. Um, I, I believe that, um, I was talking to Joy about this the other day, um, that the hundred and twenty-day state stipulation and approvals expires on, I think, July, March ninth. Um, and she, uh, we, we were talking about what's, what would happen if this thing were to expire more, if it also extended beyond March ninth. You know, our, our issue is, is that until we have our approvals from the city, we're not able to finalize our engineering. Until we finalize our engineering, the city's not gonna be able to approve our plans and give us our permits. And my biggest concern's going to be is we have a window of, again, four months. And I'm hoping that this process isn't going to, you know, push us into April and May because I'm assuming the city's gonna take, um, a month, four weeks or so to review, send the red lines back, and then we're into June and July. So, I'm, I'm sensitive to my window of building opportunity, developing opportunities for those four months that we get.
Okay, well, let me give you, uh, from the volunteer citizen chair of this committee of how, my understanding of the timing works, yes, we do have to comply with the hundred and twenty-day rule. But our, our planning commission rules state that if either the applicant or someone in the audience at our first evidentiary hearing requests for a continuance, we will automatically accept that request for a continuance. Um, so, having had that request, we are going to continue it to the next hearing and.
Which is when?
February thirteenth.
So, this is, okay.
And, and then, um, as the first evidentiary hearing is the planning commission, then the city council would not have that same obligation for a continuance unless their rules have changed, that I'm not aware of.
But they, but, but we were told that they're required to have two hearings.
Unless they have an emergency ordinance, correct?
So, they have to hear this twice, so.
So, they'll hear it on the twentieth and March sixth. So, they'll hear it.
They, if, if you don't hear it until February thirteenth, we won't be able to get a packet to the council, um, until their February.
March.
March sixth meeting.
And because that's the end.
In which case, we might need to request a hundred and twenty-day waiver. Um, but that's just the, I mean, there's nothing we can do about it. It doesn't sound like you're in a position to make a recommendation to the council this evening.
Well, we, we're, we're under our rules, which require a continuance to the next meeting.
So, the, the earliest council would be able to hear it first is March sixth. And they do have a first and second reading requirement for their ordinances, which this would have to be an ordinance. Um, so it'd be March sixth and March twentieth would be the hearing dates at council.
The council doesn't have a meeting between February thirteenth and March sixth?
Uh, March twentieth.
Right.
What, we couldn't, you need more than a week?
We have to get the, yes, um, our packet is due to Sylvia a week and the Friday before the hearings. Time for us to get your recommendation, get a packet into the council and have, then have time to review it.
But they can't, could, they, they also have the emergency ordinance adoption if it's unanimous.
Yeah, so they, they would have to do it, um, it is an option if all of council is there and unanimously approving it, which, so that, that may be an option.
So, I, I don't know why it came to us for hearing today, so, I mean, I don't know, you know, if there was a delay, if the, if you guys had asked for, um, a delay in the hearing previously for other information to be submitted or.
No, it was, our application was deemed complete, I think, November the ninth. So, we really haven't had a lot of input since then. Um, it's just been going through review and process. So, if I, Bobby, if I can ask you, what is the general turnaround once this is our agenda, from the first review? Um, it'll take four weeks?
Well, normally, I would say if it was a normal development with flat grades and everything looking pretty, um, yeah, we could do it. I don't know what this is gonna be like, um, if we hit all the major points and get everything done correctly, we could push it and, and make it within four weeks. I would say that would be a, a good conservative estimate.
And so then we, then no red lines, we'll change the red lines if we submit, so then it's a matter of a couple of weeks to review.
Probably not a couple of weeks. If, if, if your engineer is doing things correctly, being that he's hitting all the red line comments on the first go-around, the turnaround time becomes days instead of weeks for our department.
All right, I'm just, again, I'm just sensitive to that because I, I know how these projects can get pushed back, pushed back, pushed back. And then I'm starting it in September and.
So, based on the request for a continuance and the meeting deadlines for the, um, council agenda, I guess we would like to ask the applicant to continue or toll the hundred and twenty days and addition.
For, I, I was just for thirty days, um, after the original March.
March ninth.
March ninth, an additional thirty days.
So, then that puts it to the eighth month.
Well, we would have a city council hearing on.
Well, I understand in March twentieth, but.
Correct.
And so, how long does it take them to, 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 to rule on it that night?
So, I, I guess I want to, I'm sorry, I need to clarify again, because, um, once you get this approval, you still have to go back through the subdivision process. So, you're not at a point where you're gonna be submitting a couple of different plans by this land use approval?
So, you're saying the land use approval by the city council on March twentieth? Then we still have to resubmit and that'll take another thirty days?
That's another, it's another land use process. It's another public hearing before the planning commission with public notice. That's the, it's subdivision essentially. Then you're, then you're actually doing that formal planning, final detailed process.
You're talking specifically about the site review then?
Right.
So, is that another hundred and twenty days?
Yes.
So, that's, so realistically, this project's, uh, maybe September, October, September, September.
Saying that you're not gonna go from a March twentieth hearing at the council to submitting a couple of different plans in thirty days.
Well, that doesn't, that doesn't work.
We don't need to, we need the, um, hundred and twenty-day clock told, but it only needs to be told to March twenty-first, the day after the pl- city.
Right.
That's the first hundred and twenty days, now there's a second hundred and twenty days.
Correct, correct. So.
So, the, so the process is once after city council, if they approve this, then you come in for a final site development review and that site development review comes back to the planning commission through the land use process. And it, it could be, you know, a hu- an additional hundred and twenty days. But if, if we receive.
Maximum.
Right, right. If we receive a complete application and everything looks good, you know, the, the process does move faster.
Well, that's a lot of hits, isn't it? So, I mean, realistically, I, I, I'm, I'm being pushed out to October, November to get my permits.
So, oh, so before you leave, what, are you willing to?
Well, I'm not really volunteering that openly.
Okay.
Because your process is pretty fused and convoluted, it, it is what it is, and so we have to follow that. And so, I just have to make it, excuse me, take as much time as you want. Because I'm not gonna be building this project in the middle of the freaking winter. I can't build those streets and move that gear around in the middle of the winter. You guys do what you want to do and I'll just continue to make my application hopefully.
At this point, it sounds like the hearing is continued to February thirteenth and we will talk with the applicant and make sure that, um, they understand the timeframes and what is necessary to kind of move this forward for you, uh, at the next hearing.
Okay, so we're just going to, can, so, based on the rules of the planning commission, we are going to continue it. Um, what is the will of the planning commission for, um, closing the hearing for public testimony or, and accepting written? Or, um, keeping it open for a full, um, testimony at the next hearing? To, to, I guess the question is, do you want to accept public testimony at the next hearing or have public testimony by written with a deadline prior to our next hearing?
I'd do the latter.
Written testimony so that staff has an opportunity to respond to it, provide written comment. So, our hearing is on the thirteenth. When does staff need it to be able to include it into our packets?
Next, the thirtieth, so it'll be seven days from today.
Okay. Does it submit additional testimony?
And we are going to not allow any public testimony at the hearing then?
I guess that's up to us.
Yep, it is, that's what I'm asking, question, question mark.
I, I would prefer not to, just so we don't get additional information that then might not be able to be responded to that evening. I'd prefer to make sure all that testimony comes in by the thirtieth.
All right, we're, yeah, we'll, we'll own.
And I think procedurally, if you leave the record open for seven days for anybody to submit additional testimony, you have to allow the applicant the opportunity to provide a final rebuttal. So, that though would give you the.
Seven days.
A week for anybody to submit anything, a week for staff to kind of take what's been taken, get, given and give a staff report. And then you might want to, at the hearing on the thirteenth, allow the applicant, um, a final opportunity to provide rebuttal to anything that has been submitted into the record, if anything.
But they can't provide new testimony at the hearing. Does the applicant understand to expedite our hearing process at the next meeting? We're going to accept written testimony from anybody over the next seven days? And then allow the staff to put together a staff report, in, including answering all the questions we put together tonight? And then the applicant will be allowed an opportunity to rebut any testimony presented and the staff report and no new testimony provided by the applicant at that hearing. Because if you bring new testimony at the hearing, we'll have to reopen it, correct, to everyone? So, so I just want to make sure the applicant understands that. And maybe you'll just be clear with her separately that if, yeah, because if they provide new testimony at the hearing, we have to reopen and allow everybody rebuttal. So, okay, so, our, Christopher.
Well, I kind of have half of this scripted.
So, I, I don't know if you noticed, but many times I am ad-libbing from, um.
Well, the way this, this script reads is it says, allow for seven days for anyone to submit additional testimonies to an end date. Then allow seven days for, uh, anyone to rebut the information received within those first seven days. So, is that?
That is not the, essentially, um.
That's how it was in the.
That's, that's the normal sort of twenty-one day, um.
Yeah, this was a twenty-one day written. Yeah, this was a twenty-one day written, so what, we're not doing twenty-one days.
Right, and, and just says, I mean, keeping it open for anybody to submit any information and then the applicant to rebut. There'll still be another opportunity at the city council to find any new testimony or, or comment on.
So we're doing this up till the thirtieth of January?
Yes.
So I'm guessing I don't have to see these two guys. Look at that, where I circled it.
I, you can.
I don't, I'm just making sure I do this right the first time.
Correct, yeah, that's why I.
Skip those two things.
So I read it.
All right.
Can, can you come to the microphone so we have it on the record, sorry?
So you're allowing an additional seven days for anyone to submit anything?
Correct.
And then seven days after that for the applicant to rebut anything that was submitted?
Well, we're, we were gonna give the opportunity for the staff to provide additional information during that seven days and that you would have up until the time of our hearing to provide rebuttal. So you would be able to provide rebuttal at our next hearing, but no new testimony to give you, to give you enough time to rebut any.
Okay, so we can provide additional information over the next seven days.
All, all new information, whatever you want.
All new information over the next seven days. And then after that, we can rebut, clear up until the hearing and in the hearing.
Correct, correct, you can rebut the staff or any other testimony provided during that seven days, yes.
Okay.
When are we, uh?
February thirteenth.
February thirteenth.
Yes.
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 All right, let's see if I can, uh, do this here. All right, I moved the Sherwood Planning Commission, close the hearing on the application for PUD seventeen dash zero one, sub seventeen dash zero one Denali Lane planned unit development and subdivision. But leave the written record for submission of additional testimony in accordance with the following. Seven days for anyone to submit additional testimony ending at five PM on January thirtieth and continuing the commission's deliberations on the matter on February thirteenth.
Just adding for clarification, would the applicant have any opportunity to rebut on or before February thirteenth?
With the opportunity for the applicant to provide rebuttal before February thirteenth.
Or on.
Or on. We got it in there.
There a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we close PUD seventeen zero one, seven, and S U V seventeen zero one and keep the written record open for seven days and allow the applicant to respond up to and including on our hearing date on February thirteenth. See it all, all right. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, so last, uh, planning commissioner announcements. Anybody have any announcements?
One more plug for the odd couple. It's the last weekend. We have three more shows this weekend at the Sherwood Art Center, Friday and two shows on Saturday. Please come see it, it's hilarious.
And then Arigas stole Kara's thunder on the comprehensive plan. She's her liaison.
Oh, that's okay, she gave a very good update. It was a great turnout. There was a great variety of, of individuals from the community. I think it's gonna be a really, really good, a really good group. So we're very excited about it and the Publix welcome to join. Am I misspeaking? So, Publix, yes, so this is the renewal of our comprehensive plan. It hasn't been done in over twenty years, so.
Final.
We look at you excited.
Get engaged.
All right, if there's no other announcements, we will adjourn. Thank you.